Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting into order. If we can all please have our seats. It is 6:00 PM. If I can please have roll call.
Councilmember Peralta.
Present.
Councilmember Alonso.
Present.
Mayor Potemayo.
Here.
Mayor Melendez.
And I am here. If you could please have the audience take their seats. Okay, we don't have closed session this evening, so we'll go ahead and start with our regular session. If I can please have our... Yeah, Richie's closing doors.
Mayor, councilmembers, the seats are reserved for the candidates and then families and the folks for the presentations today.
If we can have everyone in the audience please come to order. The meeting has started. We need to have you all please take your seats and be silent. We're going to close the back door so we can keep the noise out of the lobby area away from coming into the council chambers. So again, please, if you have desire to come into the council chambers, it's the time to come and take your seat. If not, then those of you in the audience, please take your seats and also we need you to come to order. We appreciate your cooperation. All right, I think we're, as we try to close the doors, I would like to ask our deputy city clerk, Kimberly, to do the invocation, and if I could please have Chief Pelais do the pledge of allegiance. If you can all please stand.
As we gather here today, let us take a moment to reflect on the importance of our shared purpose and the collective efforts that bring us together. Let us embrace the diversity of perspectives and backgrounds in the room, recognizing that it enriches our discussions and strengthens our bonds. May we approach our tasks with open minds, kindness, and a commitment to understanding. Let us strive for excellence in all our endeavors, knowing that we can achieve our goals through collaboration and cooperation. As we begin this meeting, let us be mindful of the impact of our words and actions on others. Let us listen with empathy, speak with clarity, and work with integrity. May this meeting be productive, inclusive, and respectful, honoring the contributions of each individual present. Let us move forward with purpose and determination, inspired by the potential of what we can accomplish together. Amen.
Let's place our hands over our heart, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every huge justice for all.
Thank you both. We'll move on to corrections to the agenda. City manager, are there any corrections?
Yes, mayor, councilmembers. Item number five, the staff report was updated and reposted to reflect an addition application that was received after the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. At this time, we'll move on to the ceremonial portion of our, and presentation portion of our agenda. We'll be starting off with item number three, the presentation of environment and sustainability. Do we have that presenter in the audience? Yeah, okay. Is this the presentation by Dr. Ryan Ellingson?
No.
Dr. Ryan Ellingson, are you here in attendance? Not here. Did we have an additional? Okay, I'll look around to see if we can add that. Do we have the presentation, Kimberly?
Yes, mayor, that's an oversight on our end. Originally, we had a secondhand smoke presentation. This is the representatives regarding that presentation, so if it's okay with the mayor, council, we would just add that presentation for now.
Okay, do we need an action taken, or can we just?
No, I think we're fine.
So this, it's a multiple that's?
Multiple, yeah. One click is one action. One click is a movement. I'll be clicking towards that laptop.
Perfect. Thank you all for your patience. You can begin? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and members of the audience. My name is Carol, and this is Antonio. We are part of a coalition called Community Alliance for Healthy Outdoor Spaces, CAHOS for short. CAHOS is made up of community members, including Montebello residents and those who work in Montebello. We come together to address pressing public health problems, specifically secondhand smoke in outdoor areas. Secondhand smoke refers to traveling smoke from the burning ends of tobacco products such as cigarettes. This also includes, sorry, this also includes plant-based products like marijuana and cannabis, and aerosols exhaled by users of electronic smoking devices. Secondhand smoke can be very damaging to our health, causing health issues like lung cancer, stroke, coronary heart disease, severe frequent asthma attacks, and sudden infant death syndrome. While most of these health issues don't manifest until decades later, some individuals may feel these effects immediately. And these individuals include children, those with weaker immune systems, people who are pregnant, mature adults, and our pets. So at CAHOS, we focus on secondhand smoke in outdoor areas, which are common public outdoor spaces that families frequent. These include outdoor recreational areas, outdoor dining areas, outdoor service areas like bus stops, areas within 25 feet from enclosed spaces where smoking is prohibited, outdoor public events, sidewalks, and outdoor work sites like construction areas. So why are we so concerned about secondhand smoke in Montebello's outdoor spaces? Well, the American Lung Association, or ALA, publishes a state of tobacco control report each year. In this report, they give a letter grade to each city based on their tobacco prevention and control efforts. This letter grade is based on five different categories, one of which is smoke-free outdoor air. Unfortunately, Montebello received a grade of an F for its tobacco prevention efforts in outdoor spaces. Pretty concerning, right? Across LA County, there are 24 jurisdictions with a comprehensive smoke-free outdoor areas ordinance. What this means is that these cities have a pretty decent grade, like an A or a B. These include six neighboring cities, which are Alhambra, Baldwin Park, Bell, Almani, South Pasadena, and Temple City. So knowing that Montebello has a grade of an F, what did we do? Well, we took a step back to look at the data. We collected over 475 surveys based on conversations we had with Montebello residents to learn about their perceptions on secondhand smoke in outdoor areas. In your packet, you will see a public opinion survey report detailing these findings. You'll see that secondhand smoke in outdoor areas has indeed been an issue for Montebello residents. In your packet, you'll also see findings based on our survey that we conducted with 25 restaurant owners or managers to learn about their experiences with secondhand smoke in their outdoor dining areas. You'll see that there's overwhelming support for smoke-free outdoor dining. And lastly, in your packet, you'll see findings from observation surveys. We conducted 50 observation surveys, which involved observing how much tobacco-related litter and smoking activity is present in Montebello's outdoor spaces. You'll see that there's significant tobacco-related litter found, and especially in bus stops.
So, we had all this data. Now what do we do? Well, the next steps was engaging with the community to educate them on the dangers of secondhand smoke. For example, we launched a Montebello family cleanup day in which community members came together to pick up trash, including various tobacco-related litters in different types of outdoor areas. During our first family cleanup day, we visited one of the bus stops at the intersection of Montebello Boulevard and Wither Boulevard. And this is the jar of tobacco litter that we found, just from one bus stop. We also participated in community events, such as the senior health fair at the Montebello Commerce YMCA, the Winter Wonderland this past December, and many Montebello night markets over the summer. At these events, we educated community members on the dangers of secondhand smoke. We also delivered educational presentation. So this picture is at the La Causa Youth Build. And then two weeks ago, we delivered a presentation at the Montebello Lions Club. We also delivered a total of three public comments to various commissions. The purpose of these public comments was to relay how coalition members feel about the second smoke in their community. We also hosted a Montebello secondhand smoke prevention town hall in October, where we had expert panel portion, resource booth, and our very own councilmember, Scott Peralta, as our keynote speaker. Lastly, we've been hosting monthly coalition meeting every Tuesday, a third Tuesday of the month, as coalition members come together to discuss solutions to better educate the community on the topic. During the meeting in September, coalition members expressed the need to raise that F grade to an A. To do this, coalition members expressed the need to have a protection against secondhand smoke in outdoor areas, essentially, outdoor areas in Montebello, essentially a comprehensive smoke-free outdoor areas ordinance. So what does a comprehensive smoke-free ordinance look like? It is essentially a solution that many neighboring cities have taken on, which aim to prohibit smoking in public and outdoor spaces. So these outdoor areas would be: outdoor dining areas, at least 25 feet from enclosed places where smoking is prohibited, outdoor public events, outdoor recreational areas, outdoor service areas such as bus stops, sidewalks, and outdoor work sites. Alright, smoke-free ordinance, uh, smoke-free outdoor area ordinances are primarily implemented through signages and participation of local businesses that are affected. Lastly, we want to take a moment to celebrate Montebello's milestones thus far that align with our coalition's values. Firstly, we want to recognize the city's passing of Amendment Ordinance Number 2471 last January 2024, which incorporated smoking regulations to the code of conduct in public recreational areas. So thank you. Secondly, we want to commend the city's efforts in implementing the 2024 to 2040 general plan. We recognize that the general plan aims to transform the city into a natural, accessible, and active community. Thus, there will inevitably be more residents spending more time outdoors, making heart, healthy, clean air even more important. The incredible work that Montebello has already achieved gives us the city a strong start to begin with. And our coalition is committed to providing the information and education to the Montebello residents and the community to ensure that the city is on the right path, and that allows us all, us here, to thrive to our fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for your activity with the community. You're all very active. We see you all everywhere, so we appreciate all of the hard work and all the efforts that you put in. I'll turn around to see if my colleagues have any questions, comments.
Yeah, I have a quick comment. I want to say first and foremost, thank you to you too. Thank you for the data you provided. Thanks to the Institute for Public Strategies, and thank you to the 25 businesses who also participated in the study and gave us feedback as well. I'm actually really proud of the fact that, you know, a large percentage of our city understands the importance and the dangers of secondhand smoke. 93% believe that secondhand smoke exposure outdoors is harmful for their health, and 95% believe they can interfere with their life enjoyment. That's really cool statistics. Really, really well done. Thank you so much. I appreciate the data you collected.
Thank you for your comments.
So thank you for bringing this, attention to this issue of secondhand smoke and for engaging our community. When looking at this issue from a closer lens, which is what you did, it's clear that Montebello needs to work toward a more comprehensive ordinance for smoke-free outdoor areas. So we will work with you. We look forward to working with you on that.
Just want to thank you as well. I've seen you, I believe, at every single event that the city has posed, has hosted for about a year and a half to two years now, and just the level that you guys have engaged, have really integrated into the community, I think is a reflection of the work that you're doing, and I think the strides that we are making and will make towards ensuring that we take this issue seriously. I believe a few months ago, we received funding and Director Palumbi has a little bit more information in terms of using this towards secondhand smoke education as well as enforcement. So I really appreciate the work that you're doing and looking forward to continuing this partnership and collaboration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Again, thank you for your presentation. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to item number one, which is the recognition of our new chief of police, Luis Lopez. I know many of you here, yeah, let's give it a, let's give a round of applause. So let me read a little bit of a background on Chief Lopez, and after that, I'm gonna have pass it to my colleagues to share some words as well before you take your oath. Chief Lopez spent 32 years as a member of the Montebello Police Department prior to his retirement in May of 2024. Chief Lopez rose through the ranks of the Montebello Police Department, beginning his career as a police cadet in May of 1992. In January of 1994, he was hired as a police trainee and sent to the police academy. On May 13th, 1994, Chief Lopez graduated from the Rio Honda Police Academy, Class 119, and was assigned to the patrol bureau. In 1998, Chief Lopez was promoted to a senior police officer and became a field training officer, sergeant member, gang unit member, and dare instructor. In 2001, Chief Lopez was promoted to corporal detective and worked a variety of assignments to include property crime detective, crimes against persons detective, and narcotics detective. In 2007, Chief Lopez was promoted to sergeant and was assigned to the patrol bureau as a field supervisor. Chief Lopez was then transferred to the detective and served as a bureau supervisor. In 2010, Chief Lopez was promoted to lieutenant and was assigned to the patrol bureau as a watch commander. Eventually, he was transferred to the detective bureau and managed all detective units and the evidence bureau. In 2012, Chief Lopez was promoted to captain and provided leadership, guidance, mentoring, and strategic direction to police officers and civilian personnel assigned to the support service division and the patrol division. He also worked collaboratively with city staff, community members, business groups, civic associations, and other law enforcement agencies. He served in this capacity until his retirement in May of 2024. Throughout his career, Chief Lopez was recognized for exemplary service by community organizations, county, state, and federal agencies, and was a recipient of the Montebello Police Department Medal of Valor, Medal of Courage, Medal of Life Saving, and Medal of Merit. Chief Lopez holds a bachelor's degree from California State University Long Beach in occupational studies, a master's degree from California State University Long Beach in emergency services administration, and a master's degree in leadership from the University of Southern California. He is currently an adjunct professor at Citrus Community College. Chief Lopez is married and the proud father of a son and daughter. A lot to read there. Again, congratulate, congratulations, chief. Before we walk you in over here to do the signing, I do want to provide the opportunity for my colleagues to say a few words. We'll start off with Councilwoman Peralta.
Yes, I just want to congratulate, congratulate you, Chief Lopez, as well as your wife, your children, and your whole family. We're extremely excited to have you be a part of our Montebello family once again. You have rose through the ranks. You were part of Montebello ever since, I think, the year before I was born, and I think that speaks to the level of professionalism, dedication, the years that you've given to the city of Montebello, the relationships that you've built. Speaking to community members, you know, they remembered you when you were retired as our community hero. You've been known to be a part of Montebello for such a long time, and we're extremely excited to be working with you, and just want to wish you congratulations once again. Thank you, Chief Lopez.
Councilmember Alonso.
Chief, we just met very recently, but congratulations to you again, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Mayor Potemayo.
Yes. So Montebello is fortunate to welcome our new chief of police to Montebello. This is not just a new chapter the police, for the police department, but a well-earned milestone for a leader who has dedicated 32 years of service to this community. Chief Lopez has been a steadfast presence in the police department, demonstrating unwavering commitment, integrity, and a deep passion for keeping Montebello safe. Over the years, he has not only upheld the highest standards of law enforcement, but has also built strong, and I say strong, look at all the people here today, relationships with all of our residents and our community. I have personally witnessed residents expressing their gratitude and excitement for having Chief Lopez heading our police department. His colleagues alike are also grateful. The MPOA, which is a police association, had a luncheon today in his honor. And we must say thank you to his family, his wife, and his twin kids he told us about. As Chief mentioned, this was a family decision to come back from retirement, from retirement to come to the city of Montebello. We truly appreciate you, appreciate you letting him come out of retirement to take on this new role as the new police chief here in Montebello. I understand we have visitors here from near and far, from outside of California, I believe, who have come here today as well to witness this milestone. We have every confidence that his leadership will continue to inspire, protect, and serve our community with excellence. Congratulations, Chief Lopez. We look forward to working together to build an even stronger Montebello.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Yes, Chief Lopez, congratulations again. It's an honor to work alongside you. I just want to, I want to say, you know, you mentioned there's a lot to read because he's accomplished so much in his career. He's been an incredible steward in the city of Montebello on many different levels. He's been, he's been with our city in his new role within a week, and I will tell you that he's been embraced by, by, on so many levels, and just this room being filled with so many different folks from different agencies, family members, friends. We had a budget meeting last week, and he was welcomed by people that have known him for 20 years plus, so. It's an honor to work with him. We were thankful that you came out of retirement to come back to, to, you know, give us your time, and we thank your wife and your family for allowing. And we thank your wife and your family for allowing you to come back to, to Montebello because he'll be spending a little bit more time over here. But, but it'll be time we'll spend, so congratulations, sir.
So at this time, I'd like to call up the, the new Chief, uh, Chief Lopez, so we can administer the oath of office.
Aye. Luis Lopez? Do solemnly swear?
Or affirm?
Or affirm?
That I will support?
That I will support?
And defend?
And defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies?
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the Constitution?
And allegiance to the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well?
And that I will well?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties?
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations. If we could give each of them a round of applause. Chief Lopez, congratulations at this time. Uh, if you, uh, I would like to see if you would like, to like to address the public, see if you worked.
Of course. Um, first of all, uh, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council, City Manager, thank you for this incredible honor. Thank you for this incredible opportunity to come back home and come back to Montebello. Um, the decision to come out of retirement may seem a little strange to some, but when you can come back to a department that you grew up in, a department that has all the pieces together already, and just a matter of us pulling in the same direction, it's exciting. Um, spending thirty-two years here has been a blessing. I've grown up here. I was nineteen years old when I started here, and it's exciting. Um, to the retirees in the room, uh, we stand on your shoulders. This department was built on you with a hundred and five years of sacrifices. Uh, to the current members of the Police Department, it's a privilege to be back. It's a privilege to be your servant leader. It's a privilege to be here and continue to do the great things that you're already doing. Any successes that this department will have is not because I'm back, it's because of the fine work that everybody's already doing. Um, to my family, uh, thank you for supporting me to come back. Uh, to my son, uh, Nick, my daughter Leila, and of course, my wife, Michelle, thank you for supporting me on these endeavors. To my sister Veronica and my brother David, uh, Mom and Dad would be proud of us. Um, but to the community, um, thank you for allowing me to spend thirty-two years here to coach your kids in baseball, to coach your kids in, uh, basketball, to coach your kids in karate, to teach them dare. Um, I've grown up with them, I've coached them. It's been a privilege to the directors, I look forward to working with all of you, to all the city staff. So I thank you for your warm welcome. And the most important thing is Montebello is a great community, it's a proud community. Um, I thank the chiefs that are here, the current chiefs, uh, former Montebello Chief Jan Wies is here, my first Chief Steve Simonian's here. Yes, clap for them because they spent their whole career here. It, it's, it's great to see the Montebello family be the Montebello family. Chief Simonian, uh, Chief Wies, it's, it's strange to be in your office, uh, but I understand the difficulties that you had when you were there. Um, Montebello, you have a great Police Department, we're proud to serve you. We will serve you with transparency, with equality, where everybody matters, we'll pull in the same directions. Some districts have some issues specific to you, the city has issues specific to itself, we will work on those together. The only way that Montebello will continue to be a great city is through collaboration. And that means all of the community, all of the officers, all of the business folks, all of the businesses, all of the stakeholders. And that's the way we keep Montebello being the shining light that it is, the proud community that it is. And I'm just a small part in making it what it wants to be, which is a proud community full of great people. So I thank you for this honor, I thank you all for the opportunity, and, uh, I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lopez. I'd like to invite my colleagues to go down there to take a picture. And also, we can have maybe all the chiefs and former chiefs also join us for the picture and family. Welcome back, everyone. Uh, actually, I'd like to invite my colleagues to go down with me to, for the next presentation. All right, welcome, everyone. We have a packed house here. Uh, it is my pleasure as the mayor here of the city of Montebello and with my colleagues to honor such a great achievement by the Montebello Indians Cheer Team. So we can give them a round of applause. It is with sincere pleasure that as the mayor and with my colleagues here, we honor the coaching staff for your exceptional leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to the success of the Montebello Indians Cheer Team. To the Montebello Indians Cheer Team, we proudly honor for your instrumental role in leading the team to victory at the JAMZ National Championship. Your expertise, guidance, and support have helped shape the team into the champions, and your hard work has been pivotal in achieving this remarkable accomplishment. The success of the season is a direct reflection of the passion for excellence and the ability to inspire and motivate each team member. We thank you for your outstanding contribution and congratulate you all on this well-deserved achievement. So first, let's give a round of applause for all the coaches. And do we have the coaches, can they come up real quick? Coaches? I know you're all out there. I know you're all out there. Let's give them a round of applause. So for the cheer team, we have here certificates. So if I could have some of the coaches read the certificates to... We have quite a few, so be patient. But we've got to make sure that each one of the members from the cheer team gets acknowledged for such, such a proud achievement and for making our city proud. So I'll give it to you, Coach. And if you want to say a few words too, talk a little bit more.
Thank you all for being here.
That was a short speech, but... Here, I'll pass it over to you so you can start announcing some of the team members. And if you can come up once your name gets announced.
Emery Andrade. Penelope Áviles. Zenaya Campos. Zayla Campos. Camilla Carrasco. Talina Chávez Mims. Haley Sacarías. Diana Villa. Victoria Tafoya. Kenzie Cifuentes. Haley Sanchez. Ivy Cifuentes. Jaslyn Amador. Gianna Morales. Audrey Martinez. Eva Cuevas. Andrea Delgado. Clarissa García. Jessie Ray Iribe. Maggie Rose Luis. Alyssa Magaña. Paisley Pantoja. Sarah Palomino. Giselle Padilla. Lily Noriega. Allison Ronces. Maya Quinones. Chloe Ramirez. And Ania Bemish. Our coaching staff Inez Achoa. Erica Palomino. Sarah Palomino. That's me. Angie Vázquez. Carlos Tafoya. Brandy Amador. Ashley Black. Isabel Del Real. Brianna Lial. And that completes our certificate.
Once again, let's give them a round of applause. I also forgot to mention, big thanks to the families, to the parents, and to all the supporters that have made this team a success. And thank you all for just representing our city and making it, you know, making our little beautiful, small city known. So we appreciate you all. Let's give them another round of applause, please. Let's go. All right, we're going to try somehow to take a picture. I know it's going to be a little... But maybe we've got some of you all here in the front. We're going to have our director, Sosnowski, climb a ladder, so you can get... Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, we have one more presentation by Dr. Ryan Ellingson. If you can please come up.
Okay. Where is it showing up? Okay, and they'll see that thing? Good evening.
Dr. Ellingson, if you can please turn around.
Yeah, you.
Yes.
Got it, sorry.
Awesome, thank you.
I know what I'm here for. Thank you for having me. My name is Ryan Ellingson. I am a biologist, a science high school teacher. And I'm here to just sort of see, talk about opportunities that Montebello might have to become leaders in sustainability and environmental awareness. Sorry. Okay, middle button? This one. Thank you. Okay, so... As a biologist, I see the world differently, I think, than most people do. And there's a quote from an ecologist and conservationist. You can see the long version at the top, but it was paraphrased by an author of a book that I read last summer, and she said that ecologists live in a world of wounds that only they can see. And every day of my life, I wake up and it feels just like this, where I see the human impacts on the environment. I have a deep understanding of our dependence upon the environment. And it's painful and it's frustrating. And, you know, I'm lucky to have a platform in a classroom where I can teach kids about these things. And it doesn't feel like enough anymore, and so I'm trying to spread the word as much as possible. Take a look at this video. This is average temperature in degrees Celsius each year, starting in the late 1800s, so shortly after we started to burn fossil fuels in the Industrial Revolution. If it hasn't passed already, look for the year you were born. Look for the year your kid was born, maybe your grandkid. 2023 and 2024 got hotter, in case you're wondering. This is how average temperature has increased since we started burning fossil fuels. You can see it's really ramped up over the last 10 to 20 years. Here's another graph showing average temperature over the last 100 years approximately. That middle line is average. And you can see right around 1980 or so, every year has been hotter than average. And it keeps getting more hotter than average. There are a lot of words here, but try to read what you can. 2024 was the hottest year on record. I gave a similar presentation at my school last year, and 2023 was the hottest year on record. The Arctic, the poles are experiencing this even more. I think what gets less appreciated are the effects of this. Not, it's not just hot. It's not just that we need to run our AC a little more often. This is disrupting food systems. This is a major driver of immigration. It's not recognized typically in this country when we talk about this, but this is a huge part of it. It's changing people's lives. It's making disasters more frequent and more devastating. It's causing deaths. It's literally killing people already. Research has shown this. It's going to get worse. People are getting more infectious diseases. It's not even a consistent model for business. And so even the arguments against doing something about it, the economic arguments, are extremely short-sighted. All of the problems from this are more expensive than the solutions, at least right now. And if none of this speaks to you, your coffee and chocolate is going to get more expensive and maybe go away in our lifetimes. Chocolate. It's also true that this is an extremely unequal problem. The people that are the most susceptible to the consequences tend to be the least responsible for the problem itself. You can see right here, the richest 1% account for over half of the emissions on the planet. This is affecting mental health increasingly. It exacerbates violence and war around the world. It's obviously affecting homeless people more than anybody else, and we have a lot more unhoused people than we did even just a few years ago. And schools. I'm seeing this. There is a disconnect among some students. There's other students who are experiencing acute anxiety because they're hearing about these problems. It doesn't stop with climate, plastic pollution. Microplastics have been found in every corner of the earth we've looked, in human blood, in the deepest trough in the ocean, and the highest peak on land, in some of the deepest sea animals. We put about 8 billion, sorry, 8 million tons of plastic waste just into the oceans, not putting it there on purpose, it's just because we use it. And we use these plastics because they're called disposable, as if it goes somewhere not on earth, as if it goes somewhere where there is no impact. Every single thing we use, every single thing we throw away, ends up, hopefully, in a landfill. That's kind of the best-case scenario, right? We have four... You have blue bins? Do you have blue bins here? Do you put the recycling in? Anybody know approximately how much plastic gets recycled when you put it in the blue bin? I'm not talking about when it goes in the trash, but in the blue bin. Any guesses? 4%. So if you're putting your plastics in the blue bin and patting yourself on the back like the job is done, it's just a lack of awareness. It's not actually getting recycled. And it's not your fault. The plastic industry created this situation. They want you to think it's being recycled. The human brain, in a recent study, has shown the average human brain has up to a teaspoon of plastic in the brain. Ever think about biodiversity? I think very few people... Do you know what biodiversity is? It's the number of species that live in a place. I teach evolution and ecology. There have been five mass extinctions in the last 500 million years. The most recent one killed the dinosaurs, all of them, except for the ones that became birds. Biodiversity loss is at least as threatening to the planet as climate change, possibly more threatening. And there's a lot of overlap between the two. Climate change causes more biodiversity loss. The headlines are alarming, but they're true. Up to 90% of coral reefs could just be gone. Coral reefs are not just a pretty thing that we dive and snorkel and look at. They provide food for millions of people around the world. Invasive species, stuff that we bring over, stuff that we plant on purpose, is spreading and costing, just in the US, $21 billion a year. No matter how synthetic you think the thing is that you're using, or where you're living, or how indoors of a person you might be, your life is 100% dependent upon natural resources. We don't get any resources from anywhere else. We've done some amazing things, gone to the moon, sent satellites farther away. Nobody's brought back a single resource, nobody's brought back a drop of water, an extra mineral, and it's far away. It's unlikely that's going to happen anytime soon. This is not just global. Water supply in California. There has never been enough water in Southern California to support the Europeans that have colonized here. The last two years, it rained quite a bit, right? Probably makes you think everything's fine. All the lakes are filled up again. All we needed was one year of severe drought. The brown colors on this map show below average rainfall, the dark colors show above average. There are millions and millions of people in that brown area that are trying to take water. We're tapping it from the ground, we're getting it from up north. There's not enough here. The thing about this is, I could talk all day about the problems. What are you supposed to do about it? It can't just stop there with, oh, the world is burning, the world's falling apart, but... You don't know what to do. I get it. Like, most people don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I can't solve this problem myself. But there are ways, and there are things happening. Listen to indigenous people who have more sustainable practices in the first place. Read into the history, find this out. There are lots of things that have been done, lots of things that people are still doing. None of it is enough right now. None of it's even close. We need more, but we can use that for inspiration. How does this affect Montebello? Take a look at this, and what do you notice? I notice oil wells. I notice invasive palm tree that's not from here. There's history here. I get that. I looked up a map of where oil wells were, where the active ones still are, where there are idle ones, where there are capped ones. Montebello is covered in them. They're all over the place. I get it. It's an important part of the history. Montebello also exists in 2025 and can change. You could think about changing the city seal to reflect current values. Montebello has a website called Go Green. It's beautiful. I started looking at details of what's there. It's great. There are things about organic waste recycling and plastic recycling and... Mostly those two. There's a page about businesses who can go green. There were six levels. I scrolled to the bottom of the page. It said, "Click the link below for..." I scrolled to the bottom of the page, it said, click the link below for information. And there was no link. The only link I could find was an application for a waiver for a business to not have to follow the composting law, to recycle organic waste. The most recent year that I saw when I was poking around the green page was that something was updated, I think, in 2012, as far as I could tell. I'm not trying to say this to criticize even, I'm trying to point out an opportunity. I think Montebello has a giant opportunity to be a leader. I think the city council could demonstrate, for example, maybe get one of these. There are water fountains. I've heard that, you know, getting filters to fill these up could be really expensive. I just filled this up in a drinking fountain, it worked really well. It's not that hard. I've had this bottle for over 15 years. It's been in a motorcycle accident with me, I've lost it a few times. It's kind of sentimental. It's possible. It's really easy, actually. I see one right there. It's not that hard. And I think that leaders have an opportunity to lead in a way that inspires the public and inspires the people that live in the city. My friend Greg, who invited me here tonight, I met him at his house first. And his entire front yard is native plants that supports native biodiversity. Every house up and down that block is grass, and it's a lawn. Lawns use too much water. They do not support native biodiversity, they're invasive. It's basically an old British custom that we adopted in the US in the 50s. It doesn't have to be this way. It can be a much more beautiful yard with native plants in it that supports butterflies and birds and all of these things that we share this earth with. That is part of us. We are part of nature, nature is part of us, and that's where we came from. There is a program to get rebates to replace your lawn with native plants that LA County, it's called Be Waterwise. One opportunity could be for Montebello to advertise that and help citizens with it. It is a complicated process. I screwed it up, and I know a lot about this stuff, right? I did my entire lawn, I didn't apply early enough. I got $0 out of it, because apparently you have to apply before you even kill your lawn. But I saw a lot of green lawns on the way here, there's a lot of opportunity to do this. Help your citizens apply for these rebates. Give them the tools they need. Help them do what they probably want to do anyway, if you just asked. And I want to end with another quote from Aldo Leopold. Ethical behavior is doing the right thing when no one else is watching, even when doing the wrong thing is legal, or maybe when the wrong thing is popular. Maybe the popular thing in the moment is not always the best thing for everybody involved. And all I'm asking is to think about the future of citizens. I have no kids, I'm not going to have kids, that's a decision I made. It's odd to me that I care so much about the future of the planet and so many people that I see who have kids don't seem to. But I think if you ask, that they would say yes, they do, they just don't know what to do. And so it would be great to see Montebello be a leader in the community. Alhambra doesn't have anything on their website, right? You could be a leader and demonstrate, and others will follow. And it makes the entire region better and the entire community better, but it has to start somewhere. And I challenge the city council, which it was actually an idea of somebody on the city council, take a pledge, maybe take a pledge tonight, that you don't have to use a disposable water bottle at every meeting. And bring your own, and show everybody that it's not that hard. It's just a decision that you have to make, that you decide, is this important? And when you do that, and when you show the concern, and you show that you can go out of your way and and accept a mild inconvenience to make a difference, it spreads, and other people will see that. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your time and your presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any questions, comments?
Yeah, first and foremost, thank you for your presentation. That was really insightful. I'm someone who shares your passion for understanding and sharing knowledge about the tribulations that we're facing as a species. I actually was a founding employee of a company that focused on whale migration patterns in the South Pacific. I was an engineer for a company that tried to do that. I've worked in clean tech for the majority of my career. I've worked on ideas for engineering technologies that help us avert some of these disasters that are impending. So I just want to say thank you for bringing that up and for focusing on facts in a world that is increasingly now becoming dismissive of experts, scientists, engineers. I appreciate your time and I appreciate your passion.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. Thank you. Okay, we'll be moving on to public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Anyone who wishes to address the city council on non-agenda items should have filled out a card, submitted to the city clerk's office prior to this point in time on the agenda. And each speaker will have three minutes. The time for public comment on non-agenda items will be, the first period will be 30 minutes. And then after that, if there are still speakers, then we will present those items or those speakers at the end of the agenda. Mr. City, I'm sorry, kind of, city deputy assistant, city whatever, city clerk. Do we have speaker cards?
Yes, we have a total of 18 speakers.
How many?
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen, one eight, okay, got it, eighteen. So if my math is right, we do three minutes for the eighteen, that's going to get us well over the first 30 minutes, but go ahead and start.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start.
And the record should reflect, we're starting public comment at 7:16.
The first speaker is Bill Palissa, followed by Yvette Fimbras.
You know, I was, my name's Bill Palissa, South Montebello. I was just handed an article. I really find this amazing. Pretending to Ms. Peralta. She gave an interview back in 2020 about, basically she was destitute. Had no money. And now she's living in a $750,000 home.
If we can please refrain from any comments and allow our speaker to speak.
Yeah, I just find that really interesting. I'd like to present this for the city. And then I do have copies for the audience, if anybody's really interested. I'm sure you are. I am too. Also, I've had many people ask me about this towing contract, this new towing contract here in the city. And Mr. City Manager, I really find it's a tragedy. A tragedy that you took, you didn't even give it to another Montebello business. I mean, that's horrible. And it, I mean, it's just disgusting. And you wonder why businesses don't come here. When we don't treat our own the right way. And let me apologize to Ms. Juliette. I, that's a really sweet young lady. And you shouldn't be treated that way as a Montebello business.
Everyone, if we can please allow our speaker to speak and refrain from clapping and
Now on to Mr. Alonso. You know, I really would like to know your intentions of the DePaul Center. We've done everything. What more are you going to do? You disappeared for two years, you didn't even help with anything with the DePaul Center. Now all of a sudden, you got gifted a seat, and you're going to be the big guy that's going to run the DePaul Center and find out what you're going to do with it as a historical society? It's just totally amazing. And then, at the last meeting, you came up with your council orals that you're going to put now because of crime so bad in South Montebello, a police substation. Well, Angie Jimenez wanted to do that many times. And her and I do not see eye to eye, but that was her idea. And you're going to try and use city taxpayer dollars? No. Maybe someday I will show you how to put a police substation in South Montebello free of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, if we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Yvette Fimbras, followed by Delia Delgado.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Montebello City Council. I'm here tonight speaking in my personal capacity. I stand before you today filled with immense pride and optimism for the future of our beloved city. I'm here to express my heartfelt appreciation for City Manager Raul Alvarez's appointment of Chief Lopez as our new police chief. With over three decades of unwavering dedication to the Montebello Police Department, Chief Lopez embodies the values of experience, leadership, and a steadfast commitment to public safety. Chief Lopez's journey with the Montebello Police Department, beginning in 1992 as a police cadet and rising through the ranks to captain, demonstrates his exceptional skill, determination, and deep-seated passion for serving and protecting our community. I believe that Chief Lopez is the perfect leader to guide our police department with integrity and serve the Montebello community with distinction. Let us all welcome back Chief Lopez and support him as he embarks on his new chapter in this career, in his career. Now I would like to take a moment to speak about another remarkable individual who is poised to make a significant impact on our community, Danielle Romero. I wholeheartedly support Danielle's candidacy for Montebello City Council District Four and urge you to consider her for this important role. Danielle's dedication to service began at the young age of 17 when she enlisted in the army. Since then, she has continued to serve her community in various capacities, including a veteran's service officer. Danielle and her family have called Montebello home for 16 years, and her deep-rooted involvement in our community is truly commendable. Danielle has worked tirelessly with local youth, coaching soccer, and leading youth group ministries. As a proud local business owner, she and her husband have profound, a profound understanding of the needs and challenges faced by Montebello's business community. Moreover, Danielle's commitment to veterans is unparalleled. She has assisted veterans and their families with benefits claims, housing, and job placement resources. Her leadership roles at the American Legion further highlight her dedication to this cause. Danielle's vision for Montebello is one of progress and prosperity. She is committed to enhancing the quality of life in Montebello, stimulating, by stimulating economic development, investing in public parks, and enhancing public safety. Her passion, experience, and unwavering commitment make her the ideal candidate for Montebello City Council District Four. I hope I can count on your support for Danielle Romero and her vision for a vibrant, thriving Montebello. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let's make Montebello the best it can be together.
Thank you for your comment, if we could have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Delia Delgado, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. I too want to congratulate Chief Lopez. I've worked with him for many years when I was employed in the Finance Department. And he is definitely a man of great integrity and professionalism and is looked at and now up to by all his officers. So that was a good appointment and congratulations. I would also like to express some concern along with the many residents that have come forth regarding the decision to take the towing contract to a towing company outside of the city of Montebello. You have taken business and tax dollars from Montebello. Helms and Hill has served our city and community and served us well for many years. I speak from experience. They have gone above and beyond what has been asked of them in their contracts and what has been required of them. And I'm surprised that any recommendations from our police department did not hold any water toward this. I'm shocked. My husband and I have had a very bad experience with Mr. C's towing. So it concerns me that we will not receive the service we deserve and the exemplary service we already had with Helms and Hill. City Manager Alvarez, I speak, I wanted to speak to you directly on this matter and not in a public forum, but you didn't return any of my calls. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, if we can have the next speaker. Again, if we can please refrain from clapping and shouting and allow our speakers to speak.
Next, we have Rosa Tamayo, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mayor Salvador Melendez.
Mayor Salvador Melendez.
En miembro del Consilio, yo soy Rosa Tamayo. La semana pasada, yo estuve en casa de una familia y mi amiga me dijo que a dos, a ella y a otra amiga, le robaron el carro, pensaban ellas, pero resulta que
My name is Rosa Tamayo. Last week, I went to my friend's house, and she and her friend mentioned that her, their car was stolen.
Por razones obvias, la grúa se las llevó los carros, no amanecieron en donde ellas habían estacionado el carro.
The tow trucks took the cars. They did not appear in the morning where they had parked them at night.
Y la grúa se los llevó a Huntington Park y a Bell Gardens.
The tow truck took them to Huntington Park and Bell Gardens.
¿Cómo es posible que ustedes aprueben contratos para otras ciudades cuando si nosotros tenemos corralón aquí?
How is it possible that you approve contracts with other cities when we have a parking here?
Y aquí es menos millaje, ellos cobran por millaje.
There's less mileage if it were here, they charge per mile.
Esto viene a que ustedes están haciendo una corrupción financiera que están cobrándoles a las familias por razones obvias.
You're charging families for obvious reasons.
Ese dinero es de familias trabajadoras que van a trabajar, necesitan sus carros, van a regresar a recoger a sus hijos de la escuela.
Their kids up from school.
Y el problema, el problema es en los carros porque aquí, que yo sepa, el corralón de la policía o de la ciudad tiene laboratorio porque pasan muchos problemas con los carros.
The issues with the cars, that I know of, the police of, the police department here
Hay crímenes adentro de los carros.
The cars. And there are crime, there is crime that is committed to the cars.
Hay transporte de drogas.
There is drug trafficking.
Hay muchos problemas cuando si aquí los detectives tienen que hacer una investigación acerca de cada carro que pasa.
There's a lot of issues here, the detectives have to investigate every car that comes through.
Esas
We have a laboratory here.
Esas ciudades, los corralones, no tienen laboratorio.
Those cities, they don't have the laboratories.
¿Por qué Raúl Álvarez haces esta corrupción tan grande de contratos que dañan a la ciudad? Que dañan a los miembros de la ciudad.
That it causes damage to
Ya para la corrupción.
The people in this city. Please stop the corruption.
Por favor, porque eso no nos conviene.
That's not good for us.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, if we can have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Margie Duarte.
Good evening, Linda Nicholas, co-founder of Match 90640. Rick, next time they tell you to put something on your orals, please do your homework. As you can see, it's, you won't look so ignorant. As you can see, I don't know, did you get the picture that I set up to you? Can you send it to him? I want him to see it. Okay. If you can see from the picture, former Mayor Cobos Cawthorn went to Senator Archuleta and showed him the need for a new fencing along Bluff Road and obtained $935,000 to pay for the replacement of the fencing project. Unfortunately, while it was being installed, the ground collapsed due to the fact the homeless were digging into the sides of the riverbed embankment. The sewer system had to be replaced from Greenwood to Bluff Road. That money better still be there, Mr. Alvarez. As for the police substation, Peralta on the record said that a $700,000 dock park was more important than a police substation in the south. Maybe the next budget. So again, do your homework, so you do not look dumb. Because when they told you this, they knew full well that she didn't pass it. Angie asked and asked, and she said a dock park was more important. Angie asked and asked, and she said a dock park was more important. Now, to today's news about the corruption in the city of Huntington Park, it was said the former employers are also under investigation, and that would be you, Raul, and you, Caesar Rolon, who you made the Public Works Director with no qualifications whatsoever. Now, guess who's also involved in this corruption? Infrastructure Engineering. The names sound familiar? The company that was fired and then three corrupt council members brought them back. No wonder why. They gave Peralta and Torres $20,000 each for their campaign, and everybody knows who's getting paid $10,000 a month under the table? Your mob boss. Yeah. No, don't involve God with her, please. From Infrastructure to AAE, their former company name, before the FBI indicted them for bribery in the cities of Maywood, Vernon, and the surrounding cities. That is why they changed your name to Infrastructure. Do your homework. I sure hope when the DA comes for you two, Raul and Caesar, that they help us clean house and get the corruption from the other three council members and you two, Mr. Alvarez, Glassman, for breaking the law by appointing him. Thank you very much. Oh, and Raul, you and Caesar need to resign now. We don't want the DA to come in here and arrest you because we don't want Montebello again in the news for corruption.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Margie Duarte, followed by Rosemary Torres.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and morons. Well, I bet you all saw the news about Huntington Park raid because of the corruption and misuse of public funds. The news said former city employees are also under investigation. That would be you, Raul Resendes, aka Alvarez, and you Public Works Director, Caesar Rolon. You both need to resign effective immediately. You have done absolutely nothing to improve our city. All you have done is bring in corrupt idiots like you. I saw your city attorney Glassman, you city attorney Glassman also represents the city of Huntington Park, right? Why doesn't that surprise us? At the last meeting, we heard you broke the law here to give those two morons the power to appoint that nut job at the end. We have all seen your podcast, and you look like a lunatic. You also sound like one. Yeah, I'm talking about you. Don't look confused. Have you Tamayo or you Peralta seen it? You both are being criticized by surrounding city council members. I was asked, are they so ignorant to know that two are not a quorum? I said, yes, they are both puppets on the take and both dirty. Hopefully, the powers watching will step in and arrest you all. Look around the room. People are terribly upset and want a clean sweep up there. The only one that will be left is our Mayor Salvador Melendez. Keep your head up, Mr. Melendez. We have your back, and for those, we have your six. For those of you that don't know what that means, in law enforcement and the military, we will always have your back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Rosemary Torres, followed by Thomas Milhouse.
Again, if we can please have order in the audience.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, you gotta be...
Lieutenant, Lieutenant Marinari.
Sir, you've been making comments all night, and you gotta get some order there, please.
Should I start now?
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Melendez and City Council members and staff. It's nice to see you up here. I'm talking. They're not listening. Chief Espinoza? Oh, Chief Espinoza's not here. I'm sorry. Chief Palais, I'm looking right at you. Nice to see you. Okay. I'd like to address a few negative situations that have been happening in our once-respected city. We're not respectable anymore. First, when did we give up our right to vote for our district council representative? And where in the Constitution does it say two council members can appoint a member from our districts? This is unheard of. As for Mr. Alonso, I'm sorry I ever met you. You should be respectable and step down. Okay, wait, I lost my concentration. Okay. If, if there were any decency and integrity, you would be gone. You should be gone, and you shouldn't have accepted this seat. You should win your seat and be elected an official, but you're not. Then District Five would have some respect for you. I'm ashamed to say that you're my representative, and that's, this comes from my heart. I'm, I'm sorry to say that. And this corruption that's going on in this city, you know, I opened my Facebook page, and there was David Torres saying to support the new businesses in the city. How about our old business, like Helms and Hill? What happened? We're getting rid of them so we can go to the city of Huntington Park? And then I hear the news, they're being indicted or they're investigating, and now they're, they're gonna come for the older employees too? That's gonna bring a bad name to our city. We were respected, now we're disrespected. It hurts my heart to have to say this, but we've got to stop this corruption. We're giving away tax dollars. Do we have enough money that we can give it away like that? David Torres, right there, big and bold letters, support this, um, the new business, and then we give our city money away? That's disgusting. Do your due diligence with giving contracts out. Keep tax-paying dollars in our city. Don't give it away. I'm gonna repeat that over and over. Tell me, why shop Montebello when you're going to give our tax dollars to elsewhere?
Thank you for your comments.
Is it, I'm over?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Does he have a speaker card?
Mine? No? Okay.
All right, thank you all for your comments. Thank you. If we can please have the next speaker? Thank you. If we can please have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Thomas Milhouse, followed by Tila Gregorian.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and people in attendance here at the City Council meeting. I think from the comments that have been made tonight by people who are citizens of the city, residents of Montebello, and people who care about the city, that you probably are aware that they don't have much opinion favorable about your decision to not choose Helms and Hill to provide towing services to the city of Montebello. Your, your, um, your proposal for services raised the time limit for responding to calls from fifteen minutes to twenty minutes. You said that after fifty or sixty years of having a requirement that tow companies be located within the city for the convenience of the city, police department primarily, and residents of Montebello, now you can choose a contract, to award a contract to somebody twelve miles away, just happens to be in Huntington Park. The only people that find it easy to get to Huntington Park these days are the FBI. The residents of Montebello certainly don't find it easy to get there, and the police don't find it easy to get there. It takes twenty-nine minutes on a good day to drive from City Hall in Montebello up to Huntington Park where you're taking police cars to investigate cars that are impounded for investigation. You typically send two or three officers up there, so it's an hour round trip. Getting to Helms and Hill is six minutes one way. Why did you choose to do that? It's gonna cost you thousands and thousands of dollars and take police officers away from Montebello. I also want to point out something that nobody's talked about so far. When you, when you have police officers that are calling for services, they can be doing so under dangerous circumstances at accident scenes where traffic exposes them to risk and danger, at crime scenes where they could be shot at, and it's happened, people have lost their lives while waiting for a tow truck. You've given them twenty minutes. How, how do you think they're gonna get there, twenty minutes, when, when the police officers take twenty-nine minutes to drive in a police car from here to Huntington Park? Those, those things should have been taken into consideration by the city council. I happen to know a lot about Helms and Hill. I managed the company for fifteen years, and during that time, it performed thousands and thousands of toes. In one six-year period, there were exactly four complaints filed against Helms and Hill out of over 6,900 toes for the city of Montebello. So it's got a pretty good record of serving the people of Montebello, and I think these people know it, and I know that all of you know it. So my question is, why did you not choose Montebello? Would you like to explain that to anybody here?
Does that conclude your comment?
Yeah, I'd love to hear your response.
We're not, it's, you provide your comment, and we, uh, we go on to the next speaker, sir. Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Tila Gregorian, followed by Edward Franco.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and Montebello residents. My name is Tila Gregorian. My address is on file, and I want to show this to everybody here.
If you can please face the council too. Thank you.
I want to, first of all, address the, uh, Rick Alonso's appointment to the city council. There was only two of you. How could you appoint someone to city council when you don't even have a quorum? I mean, those are basic rules. I know it, do you not? Scarlett and Tamayo, you appointed someone to the city council by two votes? What is wrong with you? It takes, how much did you get paid off? Maybe I should ask that question too. Because who is this person? I don't think anybody, or not many people in Montebello know him. And he sits there, I'd be so embarrassed, I wouldn't show up to the meeting. I wouldn't have shown up to the meeting today. What is wrong with our city? We used to have a very, very good city and good city council members. I don't know whether it's a lot of money floating around in Montebello, there is a lot of money floating around in Montebello, that I do know. But anyway, what you need to do is, uh, I don't know. I do not believe that Rick Alonso belongs up there. Just the sure plain way that you did it. Two people, and, and Mr. Arnold Glassman, by the way, you were here present. You are the city attorney, it was your responsibility to advise him against that, and you did not. So why are we paying you millions of dollars for if not to represent our city and advise the council members? I mean, this council, the city is getting so corrupt. I can't believe that. I've lived here most of my life, and I've been very proud of my city, but not anymore. I'm ashamed. Don't ask me where I live because I don't want to tell you. We used to be a very good city, and we used to have good representation in our city council, our city staff, but no, I, I don't think we do, excluding Sal. He's always been very truthful and dependable, but that's only one person. I'm glad.
Thank you for your comments.
My time is over because I'm just not very happy with it.
Thank you for your comments. If we could have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Edward Franco, followed by Cecilia López.
Ready? Okay. Um, council, I appreciate the opportunity to practice my First Amendment right here tonight. With that said, um, the council appointed Rick Alonso to District Five in what I believe was an illegal fashion. I, I don't know how some of you can actually sit here and acknowledge his seat. That's just my opinion. The contract for the towing service was awarded to Mr. C.'s towing in what I also believe was a corrupt way. We should support the businesses in Montebello, especially if they can service the people of Montebello in a much better fashion. I can only wonder why the other choice was made. With that said, on my way in today, it was brought to my attention that, well, I guess some people already said it, the FBI raided Huntington Park. My understanding is that, you know, it, it's hard to say it because, I mean, a lot of us kind of knew it was coming, but it's a shame to know that some of the people that are gonna be investigated in this, I mean, at least according to this, what this tells me, the same sources of the officials to be involved, including our own city manager. It hurts to know that somebody from Montebello is gonna be investigated from the FBI. And my only other question is, who else is gonna be investigated by the FBI? I wonder. They were all kind of supported by one specific person, and I, I, I don't know, it's disgusting. As some people sit here said, we were proud to, to say we were from Montebello. I still like to say it, but it hurts now because some people are, some people up there, except for, well, one, that I think, um, are supporting a lot of this corruptness. You guys should be ashamed of yourself. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, we have reached the thirty minutes of the speaking portion. We do have speakers. We're gonna put those speakers at the end just to give, um, you know, we have a couple of items, and we have a couple of applicants here going for the District Four position, so we want to get that, through that first. So we'll call the rest of the speakers later on in the, at the end of the council agenda.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I would, I would recommend we just move forward. I think that's how we've always done it, and just to be respectful of the practice and I think folks that are here to speak.
Okay, we can go ahead and do that. Does everybody agree? All right, we'll call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Cecilia López, followed by Antonio Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, and residents. My name is Cecilia López. I'm the general chairperson for Local Seventeen Oh One. I represent the Transit Department, the storekeepers, service workers, mechanics, and bus operators that service your community. We stand here before you today as proud representatives of Smart TD to express our unwavering and steadfast support for City Manager Raul Alvarez and current City Council. Montebello is deniably on the right track, and we cannot afford to turn back. Under the leadership of Mr. Alvarez and City Council, our city has made tremendous strides, and it is imperative that we continue building this momentum for the benefit of all. Montebello has experienced a period of remarkable growth. Monobello has experienced a period of remarkable growth and positive change and stability. We want to be clear, we are wholeheartedly satisfied with Mr. Alvarez's leadership and his dedication to the city. Unfortunately, I did not interrupt you, that's rude.
Wait, we can please.
I'm also a resident, be respectful, please.
If we can please refrain from making any comments and just allowing the speaker again to complete her public comment. Can you continue, please?
Unfortunately, yes, you will encounter obstacles along the way. It comes with the territory. However, do not allow this to deter you. This only means you are doing a phenomenal job, which I may add made a huge impact to Transit and its employees, our members. We were finally, we are being finally seen and heard, treated with respect and dignity. We deeply appreciate Mr. Alvarez's commitment to ensuring fair compensation and working conditions for all employees, which have been a constant priority for him since his arrival. Moreover, we acknowledge and value the hard work and dedication of the city council, who have played an essential role in making Monobello the thriving community it is today. It is truly unfortunate that the city manager, Mr. Alvarez, has not always received recognition. He is so rightfully deserved for his efforts. From his very first day in office, Mr. Alvarez has proven himself to be one of the most accessible and engaged city managers we've had the pleasure of working with. He has been open and receptive. His genuine commitment to fostering an transparent and inclusive environment, the record should reflect that the positive impact Mr. Alvarez has had on this city, and we, as the proud representatives of Smart TD, want to publicly acknowledge his exceptional service. We look forward to seeing him continue to lead Monobello towards a brighter future, and we sincerely hope that he remains with us for many years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, and we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Antonio Herrera, followed by Barbara Reese.
Thank you. Again, please, we have to, we have to allow the speaker. Gets to the microphone. I do want to remind the council and actually everyone in the audience that there are provisions of the Brown Act with respect to civility in a council meeting, interruptions that are that are. People who interrupt can be removed from these council chambers. Everybody's First Amendment rights need to be protected. Screaming from your seats in the audience, I've heard profanity tonight, I've heard disrespect, and, Mr. Mayor, if it continues, I think it would be important for the mayor to call those people out of order, to then direct that individual to be reminded that if they continue in that fashion, that they will be removed. This is a business meeting. This is not a Peps rally or any other type of meeting. And so it is important, and I want to remind the council, members of the city, mayor, members of the city council, to please enforce the civility requirements of of the Brown Act and the provisions of the government code. Thank you.
If we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Antonio Herrera.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Antonio Herrera, president, bus operator, Monobello Bus Lines, and president of Smart TD Local 1701, here to speak on the progress that has been made at Transit and the work environment, thanks to city manager Alvarez and his staff. There has been a sense of stability brought back to our workplace, where we don't have to worry about being placed on administrative leave for any minor reason, and are seen and heard by management and the director, Soria, when we raise our concerns, something that we have not had in a very long time. Thanks to the city manager and his staff, we now have a transit agency that provides consistent service that goes with the schedule that is being given to the public. Before, the public riders wouldn't be sure if the bus was going to show up, because there might have been a driver that has been placed on administrative leave. But now the service is consistent and reliable, benefiting the community. So we want to thank the city manager and his staff for improving Monobello bus lines and for establishing a positive relationship with us, the employees, and ask that it continues on with negotiations starting soon. We do believe the city, city manager and staff do care about workers and workers' rights. We trust and hope that the city, along with the city manager, continue to do their best for the community and for the workforce that serves the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and we can please have the next speaker. Again, please, we got to refrain from clapping after each speaker.
The next speaker is Barbara Reese.
Good evening, city mayor and council members. I've been a bus operator for City of Monobello for almost 12 years now. The past four years have been a whirlwind of emotions for our Transit Department. Finally, things are starting to look and feel promising. I'd like to thank city manager Raul Alvarez for appointing Transit's new director, John Soria. Mr. Soria is doing a great job based on the challenges that were left behind. I'm confident he will continue to make our department triumph. I'd also like to thank Mr. Alvarez for the generous contribution to our medical insurance. Inflation is something that we are all dealing with, but that gives some relief. Thank you for bringing last year's negotiations to a close. It was a long overdue process, but I'm confident this time around negotiations won't take two-plus years, but will be just and mutually agreed upon in a timely manner. Aside from the gratitude, there's concern. Even though the city of Monobello has advised its operators to not in any fashion quote the fare, we have adopted new issues on the bus. The verbal abuse because we are not quoting the fare is our new issue. I, for one, have had customers get upset at me because customers don't pay or just walk in the bus with no interaction with the operator. I'm being called a effing idiot. Do my effing job, you must be an effing rookie, and I'm going to be fired. Those are just some of the choice words. Some operators go through similar situations, if not worse. This is the everyday event. The props that were put on the buses to observe and report is ludicrous, meaning allied security, waste of taxpayers' money. I'd rather my hard-earned taxes go to the, go to funding more Monobello police officers so we can get our transit officers back on our buses like we had before pandemic, to not only ensure the security and safety of our customers, but of our bus operators, or make bus, or make Monobello bus lines free for all riders to uplift some concern. Also, in December 2024, Metro finalized the installation of improved protective barriers in their buses. Is Monobello bus lines next in line to a safer working environment? I hope so. Thank you for your time, and God bless you all. Good night.
Thank you for your comments, and we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Martha Cortez.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and staff. I am Martha Cortez, a Transit bus operator and SMART member. I would like to express my gratitude for the administration's efforts in our recent negotiations, which we have been crucial in addressing our wages and insurance needs. As we prepare for the upcoming negotiations, it is important to consider external economic factors that could affect our discussions and the competitiveness of our transit facility. Ensuring the safety of our bus operators remains a priority. I recently experienced a hate crime due to racism, highlighting the critical need for effective safety measures. We must clearly define and communicate our safety policies while regularly inspecting and documenting risk through a Transit Loss Report, TLR. Since not all incidents are reported, we must address the challenges this poses, this poses to our safety. I also recommend implementing a safety training workshop for bus operators to enhance our confidence and foster a positive work environment. Thank you for your attention to these vital issues.
Thank you for your comment, and we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Marie Ledesma.
Good evening, mayor, council, city and staff. My name is Marie Ledesma. I'm here today to express my deep disappointment and outrage with Scarlett Peralta and Georgina Tamayo for making a critical decision on January 29th without a quorum. I hold the city attorney, Arnold Glassman, responsible for providing misleading information and flawed legal advice that will likely result in a quoranto. For the past 17 years, Mr. Glassman, you have been the city attorney, and he has been responsible for advising on city issues, yet his guidance has been questionable, resulting in countless litigations, and she, he should be held accountable. I believe that on his contract, he needs to be evaluated every two months, or at least once a year. I'm not aware of any evaluation of his employment with Monobello. Mr. Glassman cannot have it both ways and apply the law as he sees fit. The law is clear, and it's simply not in his favor. Quorum was not reached, and the city business should have never, should have been concluded, never conducted. Ms. Peralta, Mr. Tamayo, this was a failed opportunity for you to be good stewards of the city and demand for good governance and transparency. Instead, you disrespected the rule of law. You disrespected your constituents, your positions as city council members. You clearly lacked the capacity to govern the city as it deserves. It was shameful that you and our leaders behaved recklessly, considering the council had yet another weak to a point. Instead, Ms. Peralta, you blamed our mayor, Melendez, for not being present. But let me jog your memory, January 22nd, when all council members were present and chambers were packed, and the residents, candidates, and their family members were here, Ms. Tamayo and Ms. Peralta made the conscious choice, a decision, not to remain silent and not to nominate anyone. Therefore, the the meeting was continued to the 29th. Your hypocrisy is blatant and disrespectful to the residents. We will never know why you remain silent, because both act as if you don't owe us an explanation. I stand here as a resident outraged, and I, along with other constituents, demand accountability. You both know this appointment would be tainted from the moment your campaign manager, Christina Cortez, involved herself in it, but neither one of you decided to recuse yourself.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Good evening, mayor, council, public. I have so much respect for the community of Monobello, for how much we do rotary and how much the city, community, and public appreciates us. So today, when we're going to hold up a sign, and I'm holding it up so you guys can see, we installed 10 signs in the city entrances to welcome the public to Monobello. It's a very important thing. I love it when I come to the city, any city, and I see welcome to our city, and we don't really have any welcoming signs. We did this in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Department. So David Sisnowski, I would like to thank you for your support. The importance of the Rotary Club is how much support our members contribute to our local schools, community. It is important that the city and public be aware of how much we contribute over the last 100 years. The city of Monobello contributed $5,000 this year to our charity fund. I just wanted to let you know where we're at now. So we've spent $4,000 on buying new clothes for kids that were in need, that didn't have school clothes, and we did that at our local company, the J.C. Penney Store. Our Youth and Government Department and the YMCA, we assisted them with $5,000. The YMCA, we, they got a grant, and we helped them distribute 100 computers to homeless kids. And AT&amp;T donated the Wi-Fi service. Some of the other projects, National Night Out, we gave books. Scholarships, $8,500 is what's, what we're giving away this year. Fire Department, we chief, oh, he's gone already, we were happy to support his foster children program. The Police Department, the Explorers, Cantwell, sure, these are just some of the kids that we've supported, whether it is for school needs, like the Whittier, I mean, the Monobello Christian School needed a TV. So we all got together and we bought him a TV. Thank you, Sarkis, he coordinated it. So as you put together your 2025-26 budget, I ask you to please continue to support the service, all the service clubs. We are the hidden treasure of the city. We are your backbone. We are the people that work and don't expect any thank yous. So I really hope that when you're putting, I know you're doing your budgets for this year, I really hope that you will remember that whatever money you give to us, we reinvest it with all of our hard work and labor, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Alan LaNuzo.
Wait, I'm sorry. We had one more thing, and we just wanted to. One of our members is here today, I'm sorry for the extra time, but one of our members is here today, and her name is Juliette. She's from Helms and Hill Towing Company, and myself, as a business owner, am outraged that she is.
We have run out, we need to allow the other speakers, that's all, but.
Okay, well, you can't give out RFPs without being fair and honest, because as a business owner, I don't want to be treated like that, and when I see you.
To be fair with all the speakers that got the specific amount of time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Monobello residents and those in attendance. Today, I'm here to address the chicanery that is occurring in our beloved city. First, I begin with the unfair termination of former police chief Paula Espinosa on grounds that have not been divulged or revealed, but remain questionable among the constituents of Monobello. The dismissal of the former chief displays a lack of transparency, communication, and willingness to disclose matters that are pertinent to our community. As we see the rise of crime escalating, residents are genuinely concerned about the day-to-day operations of the police department, and specifically, who is behind the helm. This dismissal demonstrates Chief Espinosa's deprivation of due process violating his 14th Amendment, Section 1 rights. Further, Monobello failure, failure of providing the public an explanation to his termination, and also of the nature of discounts and affiliates clandestine operation hiring former Monobello police captain Luis Lopez, who has a questionable and unethical background at their will. Honesty, transparency, fairness, and justice are paramount when it comes to having inadequate local governments, a government where citizens have confidence and trust. Secondly, the unconstitutional appointment of the bizarre Rick Alonso to represent District Five. America is a constitutional democratic republic where citizens elect our representatives to represent the citizen body. We, the people of District Five, never had an election to appoint Rick Alonso or any other candidate to this council. This flagrant act displays Monobello's lack of integrity, governmental power overreach, and also the violation of our rights as Americans. As far as we are concerned, District Five is still vacant, because he was never elected but rather appointed by his colleagues who are on the bench with them. This egregious violation displays his, the unconcern for us residents, believing that this informal illegitimate appointment will go unchallenged and taking us for uneducated fools. Moreover, this unethical behavior demonstrates this council's un-American philosophy as they're willing to partake in nefarious actions toward their constituents. This is communist, un-American, and malfeasance by all involved and those willing to partake in this collusion. A formal resignation or dismissal of its position and a fair election for District Five is the only means of restoring trust with the public at this. 5 is the only means of restoring trust with the public at this point. We expect him to advocate his position promptly and set his position in order with urgency. Lastly, this council is not a stranger to violating one's constitutional rights. On June 26, 2024, Montebello held a council meeting in which my constitutional rights, First Amendment's rights, the freedom of speech, was clearly violated by then-former Mayor Scarlett Peralta. It is evident upon looking at the video footage, it's on YouTube, that my microphone was cut off at the one-minute and thirty-four-second mark at the behest of Scarlett. I kept seeing and heard challenging the council in regards to my remaining time during my allocated three-minute public comments. I was dismissed by the then-mayor, once again demonstrating her disdain towards me. Scarlett is not American, she's unprofessional, and lastly, not qualified to hold any position of authority to represent government, as she has demonstrated over her career. She is incapable of governing herself and her personal feelings. I bring this to attention of District 2 and Montebello.
Thank you for your comments. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Our last speaker is Greg Gonzalez.
Thank you for the time. I'll be quick, I know there is lots on the agenda. This isn't a pep rally, you're right, but it is democracy in action. I commend my fellow citizens for voicing their opinion and their passion up here. I also call on the attempt to build more transparency. I have begun to investigate the Brown laws, et cetera. I'm not an expert in any of this, but I do think we would all stand to benefit, again, I've made this comment before, in a public forum of some form, where council members are openly asked questions and must answer on the spot. The other thing I would ask for, to respect residents' time, is to hold, and I'm not sure, I really don't know if there's a good reason for this, there probably is, I just don't know what it is, to hold private session after the public begins, because no one really knows exactly when the main show of the city council meeting would start. Is it possible to start the city council meeting at 6:00 PM and hold closed session after? I hope there is one thing we can agree on. I thank the council for giving Dr. Ryan Alexson time, and I also hope that that could be the start of a more sustainable Montebello with environmental justice for all. As a small step toward that, I donate here seven reusable water bottles for everyone on the dais. I will present them to the deputy city clerk, so that we never have to have a plastic water bottle here on the dais again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe that concludes all speakers. We'll move on to staff communication on items of community interest.
Yes, sir. I have a couple items that I want to bring to attention to residents. Last week, we had our first budget meeting at the Senior Center. It was a great turnout, and this week, we're going to continue this new process, which we started last year under the leadership of the city council. What we really intend to do is actually bring the budget process to residents, as opposed to actually formulating solely here in the city council chambers, in the city hall. One of the things that we try to do is actually go out there, go to the public, do a budget presentation, and then we try to garner feedback. This year, we actually added something new at the request of the mayor, where we're actually having department staff from PD, fire, code enforcement, to actually assist you personally on any of the issues that you may have. So in that respect, I want to invite you to the next meeting that we're having. It's actually tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Reggie Rodriguez Park. It's going to be the second meeting. We invite you to that, and then also, in addition to a budget presentation we're going to be doing shortly, we plan on having two more budget sessions in March. So wanted to announce that, invite everybody. In addition, I wanted to make an announcement in terms of an appointment, a very happy announcement for me. As of January 28th, I did appoint Angelica Palmeros as our new acting assistant city manager. Many of you may know Angelica, because over the last four years, she's been working very closely with our community as the assistant director of the fire department. Professionally, Angelica brings over twenty years of experience in municipal government. Academically, she has a BA from Cal State University, LA, and then a master's from the University of Southern California. During her tenure with our city, Angelica has been instrumental with implementing key initiatives and programs for our fire department, which have enhanced services directly to residents. I welcome Angelica's experience and positive demeanor, which will help move our city forward. Please join me in welcoming Angelica into your room.
Okay, thank you for that. Welcome, Angelica. We'll be moving on to our public hearing, which...
Quickly congratulate her.
It counts, ma'am.
Angelica, I just want to quickly congratulate you. Angelica, sorry, I just wanted to quickly congratulate you. You know, for the past, I think, five years that you've been here with the city of Montebello, especially as assistant director to the fire department, you've brought millions in in funding. You've been able to help our chief as well, in terms of actually having our fire department almost fully staffed, which is something that it has been unheard of for our city, and so I really do appreciate all the work that you've done. I think this is a position that is well-deserved, and so I congratulate you on that, and also just want to uplift our city manager for these intentional promotions within our fire chief, as well as the acting assisting manager role, and ensuring that these are positions that are coming in from folks that are within our organization. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, council member. Okay, we'll move on to our public hearing, to item number four. Do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, speaking on this item is Mr. Joseph Palumbi, our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Item four on tonight's agenda pertains to a request for approval of a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020/2021 annual action plan. This would be for the reallocation of federal community development block grant funds or CDBG funds. Could I get the slide up? There we go. All right. Perfect. Okay. So the CDBG program is a federal program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This program provides federal funding to local governments, including the city of Montebello, and this program is intended to support community development, housing initiatives, as well as public facilities improvements. So this request seeks to reallocate $342,443 in federal CDBG funds that were approved in 2020, I believe, for the 2020/2021 annual action plan. So this slide lists the approved CDBG activities, along with the allocations for the 2020/2021 annual action plan. The annual action plan provides the framework for how Montebello intends to use its CDBG funding during a specific program year, and in this case, it's 2020/21. As mentioned, tonight's request proposes redirecting federal funding from the Montebello Senior Center. This was a project, I believe, that was requested through the Parks Department, and it will be basically for the improvement at the senior centers. We will be reallocating those funds to support improvements at Fire Station 56. If approved, this amendment will reallocate $342,443 in federal dollars in CDBG funds, combining them with the previously approved $465,084, which would increase the total CDBG funding to $807,527, and this would be dedicated for improvements to Fire Station 56. These improvements include, I believe, a new roof, as well as upgrades to the air conditioning system. I know that the summer is approaching quickly, so we need to get those repairs done ASAP. This amendment obviously will reduce impact on the city's general fund, and just to caveat it, final approval from HUD will be required for implementation. So I just wanted to note that. So this concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll turn around to see if my colleagues have any questions or comments.
Before you make some comments, can I make a couple of just additions? Thank you, Mr. Palumbi, for you and your staff, for your hard work in bringing this item for council. Couple tidbits of information that you should know. This is, I mentioned right now, in terms of Angelica and her work, her and the chief, and it's really a team effort at the fire department, and this has been one of those issues that has been brought up for many, many years. There's been these challenges at Station 56 with the roof, with their AC system. So I can tell you, these are issues that are brought up to us on a regular basis, and collectively, with finance, with public works, we try to determine what's the best solution possible to make sure that we address these things now. And this one in particular, we were able to reallocate funding to ensure that we address this project, which is a high priority for the city of Montebello. But as Joseph Palumbi mentioned, that he mentioned in terms of, we're reallocating this funding from a senior project, senior center project. I want to be clear, that does not mean that a senior center project is not moving forward. That's something that's been also in the pipeline for many, many years. What we actually did is, we were actually to reallocate different funds to make sure that we're able to fully fund that project, and in addition, we're going to be able to fully fund this project for Station 56. And the best news for you residents is that we're using zero general fund monies for these projects, and it'll provide a great benefit for residents of Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Peralta?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You actually answered my question. I just wanted to ensure that the senior center project was something that we would still be moving forward, and so happy to hear that both that project, as well as the enhancements to Station 56 are also moving forward. That's been a concern among council in terms of the roofing and the situation that our firefighters, who actually, for the most part of their week, live on site, have to deal with, and so we appreciate this project moving forward as well. Thank you.
Before any other comments, this is a public hearing, so we do want to open it up to the public. It is 8:21, we'll open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this item.
Please consider giving Hearts of Compassion a substantial amount. They feed 3,000 people a week. 3,000 people. That's a lot of people that would go hungry without your help. When there was a tornado in the South, Hearts of Compassion was called upon to step up and help feed the fire, police, the business, everybody down there. They stepped up and they fed them. So they need your help to get funds. When David has had a need for anything in the city, the Hearts of Compassion is there. They never say no to the city. So please, consider giving them more funds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this?
I guess my question is, a roof and an AC. I just built a brand-new 1,200-square-foot ADU in my backyard in the last couple of years, and it came in way under $800,000. So I was just wondering how much of that money is being allocated for a roof and an AC, and what the rest of the money gets used for. $800,000 for a roof and an AC seems quite substantial.
If we can maybe have staff provide a follow-up with the resident?
Yes, and if I may, Mr. City Manager. So I just want to also say that we regularly communicate with our federal partners at HUD, so there is a requirement that we track and monitor all of the work, and everything that's done will be transparent, so we can definitely provide any information that is requested related to those improvements.
And yeah, just, I mean, this is one step. If council does appropriate this funding or reallocate it, we need to go through our HUD process to actually have that money there. In the future, we will be bringing an item to council to actually award, and we'll go through the whole process of actually doing this project. Like everything else, whenever we present a project, you provide the specs, the details, the whole process, so you'll be able to see for yourself what entails and what will result in a project costing as much for a facility in our city. So that'll be coming in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just in an effort, you know, in the spirit of improving the climate that you see here with all of the concerned citizens, I was very pleased just a minute ago to find out that it was Fire Station 56 located on Greenwood Avenue in South Montebello receiving this benefit. The amount is very questionable, so thank you for bringing that up, something I didn't even think about, but with the experience that many of the council members have, it has to be painfully obvious, the concern that, you know, projects from the other districts always seem to be mentioned excluding South Montebello projects. So you have to understand, you have to be sensitive to the fact that those are always going to be picked apart, because South Montebello, it's painfully obvious, if you do a five-minute drive through the area, how much improvement needs to happen there. So I would just say, you know, in the spirit of improving the climate of what you're hearing here, you know, negative climate, you know, a point I can offer to you is just be aware when other projects are mentioned, those are probably not going to be received well by the audience that you're typically seeing here over these past few months, and you'll continue to see. So just a point of reference.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will be closing the public hearing at 8:25, and I'll turn it back over here to see if any of my colleagues have any other comments or questions. No? Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll motion to approve item.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
I second.
We have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Tamaio. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Tamaio?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. That item carries? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, the appointment to fill District 4 city council vacancy, and I'll turn it over to our city manager and city attorney to explain the process.
Of course, Mayor, council members are happy to speak on this item. This item is a result of a resignation that was received by former council member David Torres on January 28, 2025. As a result of the resignation, the council has the option of filling this vacancy either by appointment or by special elections within sixty days. On February 12, 2025, the city council unanimously voted to fill the vacancy through an appointment process. Registered voters residing in the city council District 4 were invited to apply. Interested community members were directed to complete the application that was available on the city's website and submitted to the city clerk by 5:30 PM on February 19, 2025. In total, the city received eight applications. Of those applications, four qualified after they met all the requirements by the prescribed deadline. Four other applications were disqualified because they did not fully meet the requirements. Out of the qualified applications, I'm going to read their names for the record. First is Daniel Romero. Second is...
If we could please refrain from yelling.
Second is Joshua P. Oloa. Third is Joel Valdez. Number four is Rafael Gutierrez. At this point, the city council has the flexibility to determine the process to appoint this position. However, we do have some suggestions in terms of choosing the names at random, which we can facilitate. Also, we have put together some questions for council to consider. We recommend that they choose one question, and then following that, make the appointment at your discretion.
Okay, city attorney, if we can explain the process. And after we explain the process, we do have some public comments on this item, so we'll invite the folks that have the public comments, and then after, we'll begin the process.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have followed this process previously, and let me identify the recommended approach. The proposed process for this evening is to give each candidate that will be interviewed up to two minutes to provide a statement with no questions being asked. The city council then will, also before those statements, there will be four questions to be selected by the city council, one question for each member of the city council, and those questions will be announced in advance to the candidates. Then at that time, the candidates will have three to five minutes to provide a statement and incorporate their responses in their three-to-five-minute time period. It is recommended that the city council utilize similar questions as listed and develop alternate questions. I will run through the sample questions for the council momentarily. We will not be calling the candidates alphabetically, but we will be selecting the candidates randomly. We will not be calling the candidates alphabetically, but we will be selecting the candidates randomly to avoid any back and forth between the candidates and the city council should be-- this presentation should be about the opportunity for the candidates to present to the city council, and it should not be a debate between council members and the candidates being interviewed. All questions being asked by the city council to the candidates should be the same for each of the four candidates. And then before I go into the sample questions, are there any questions from the city council or suggestions to alter or deviate from those recommendations?
Does anybody have any comments, questions, issues? Okay. May proceed.
Okay, thank you. Here are the here are eight sample questions that are being proposed, and I'll go in no particular order. These proposed sample questions would be, can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how that has prepared you for this opportunity? Second question would be, would you, what would you say are the most important issues facing our community and how you help address them? The third sample question would be, how do you how do you balance the needs of the community or organization with your own values and priorities? Four, what strategies do you use to ensure transparency in decision-making? The next question, how do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions? The next question is, what programs or services that the city provides would you like to see more of, and how would you suggest improving them? Seventh question is, what do you believe is the role of the city council in our community of Montebello? And the last proposed question is, please describe how you would like the city of Montebello to look in the next five years. So those are the proposed eight questions, and then it's a question actually to the city council. And the way we've done this in the past is the four candidates would be escorted to a room where they would not be able to hear the questions in advance, or do you want to have those in advance?
Mr. Glassman, may I say something?
When you, if you have a speaker card, we'll have the speaker cards before the public comments.
I think he's talking about because of the process. The process, I went through the process. Please make everybody, candidate, leave their phone over here because somebody had the questions texted.
Again, well, let me get through this process, and then we'll come back to the council. And then the question is whether you want the candidates, all the four candidates, to know which of the questions, these questions are being selected by the council in advance, or are those going to be addressed here at the DIA? So I think the way it's structured is that the council makes those selections, the candidates get to retire to the waiting room, and then when they do come forward, they will have the opportunity to give their two-minute presentation about their about their background qualifications, and then a three-to-five-minute presentation incorporating their responses to the overall four questions. But again, it's up to the pleasure of the council.
So let's at this time poll the council on what question they want to ask, and then after that, we'll move into public comments.
Okay.
So we'll start off with--
Let me go through the rotation for today.
Councilmember Peralta?
Do we read out the question or just say question number six?
Which, either what number--
Okay, so question number six, what programs or services that the city provides you, would you like to see more of, and how would you suggest improving them?
Okay. We'll move on to, let's see where we, Councilmember Alonso?
How do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions?
Okay, that's question five.
Mayor Pro Tem Tamaio?
Question number three, how do you balance the needs of the community or organizations with your own values and priorities?
Thank you. And our last question, number one, can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how that has prepared you for this opportunity?
So then all questions have been identified and selected. At this time, then, I think it's appropriate to go to public comment?
Yes. If we can please call our first speaker?
Our first speaker is Will Severa.
Hey, council. How do we go about this? You know, just real quick, Arnold mentioned about cursing. I can tell Arnold, go fuck himself, and you guys can't stop me because that's my right. And it works in L.A. City and all the other places. Stop trying to intimidate people because that's all you've been doing. And we see you smirking at the residents when they're speaking up here, trying to cause intimidation. I'm not intimidated of you by any freaking means, and nobody here is either. So it would be appropriate, if you want to have a constructive business meeting, I don't see constructive business meetings where people are getting laughed at, not paying attention to each other. They're circling around and not even looking at the person that's speaking. It's disgusting. The law that you quoted was from nineteen thirty-nine, and we have the email to prove that you did not even contact Srasser and Woosher at all for that specific meeting that you guys had. But here's the bad part, you guys play with our money. The police officers, you and the transit union, they're all coming up here, all coming to bat because why? His city just came out in the newspaper for a raid today. So now they're trying to kumbaya you. We're not stupid. Now it's going to come up to the appointment of who's going to come up here. You know, Rafael, he did run at one time, and he lost majorly. Then you have Rick Alonso that's up there. And if you can actually look at me, Rick, that'd be great instead of getting off your phone. Because, you know, when it comes up here, I know you don't come to actual meetings until they handed you a seat. But it's really rude that you cannot pay attention to the people talking to you. Can't even fire him because they appointed him. So the reason why I'm bringing all this up is you felt it was perfectly acceptable for you to be appointed just with two people, even though they did not have quorum. You couldn't win an actual race. That's why they needed to appoint you. That's the only reason why they held off on Angie Jimenez being able to give anything to the South side because the appointment was already, it was already in the works for you. Scarlett, your reason for actually nominating him is because he's bilingual, right? Flew into Spanish. Joella's trilingual. Cool, got another one. Oh, guess what? You guys all complain about diversity. Mexican, 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 Mexican. Where's the diversity? Right here? There's only one that's going to be considered diverse. Now, you also said because he knocked on hundreds of doors out of thousands of residents in his districts. That's how lazy he is. Joella actually got over a thousand votes at forty-seven percent. So what's your excuse now? She knocked on all the doors, she came in two hundred votes away from David. But please prove us wrong. Please prove what you said for that man right there, not a councilman, because he's a piece of shit. Sorry, but like, how does a man get up there knowing that they don't have the right to be up there? They didn't even have the vote. And you know what? By the way, Glassman, Kamala Harris's opinion actually states that it's the whole body, not just a section. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Bill Paliso.
Thank you, Will. Tough act to follow. And, Mr. Glassman, I just don't think they should have their phones back there. Because somebody had the questions texted him. He wouldn't speak to anybody the first twenty minutes he was back there because his campaign manager, Christina Cortez, was texting him the questions. And that's, it's, you can't make this stuff up. But here we go again. Let's just see what's going to happen. Let's just see. There's one person, and no disrespect to anybody else who's over here. You're the one who made the statements, Ms. Peralta. You did it. Rick Alonso should be the one because he came in second in District Five. Joella Valdez deserves this appointment. Forty-seven percent of the vote. Should be no questions asked. None whatsoever. Forty-seven percent. I'm going to just keep forty-seven percent. Forty-seven percent. She's intelligent, smart, and I'm going to tell you, her and I didn't see eye to eye a lot. But that young lady sat down with me and had a business conversation. That says a lot. Unlike you, who wouldn't even take my phone call. And I'm a resident of this city. That man over there walked away from me at the Metro meeting in South Montebello. Well, you will answer to me because you work for me. So Joella Valdez is deserving one for this appointment. Case closed.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Luis Paroqua.
First of all, wow. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Luis Paroqua. I'm here tonight to speak in personal capacity in support of Danielle Romero for appointment of vacancy on the Montebello City Council District Four. I've known Danielle seven years, and in those seven years, I became a member of the American Legion. She's an Army veteran who served her country, and she continues to serve her country by being a VSO, Veteran Service Officer for the Veterans, making sure they have their benefits and resources that they need. Also, she's on the Board of Directors at the American Legion. There's nothing this woman can't do, and she's highly motivated, and she's dedicated. If anybody can do this job, it's her. And just for a positive note to City of Montebello, you guys would be blessed to have her. Still have to say. Go Danielle.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker? Again, if we can please refrain from yelling. Thank you.
The next speaker is Yvette Fimbrus.
Hello. I'm here speaking on behalf of Joanne Cardona, the mother of Danielle Romero. I would like to address the District Four City Council and City Council and members of the city of Montebello on behalf of my daughter Danielle Romero. Miha, when you were born, I knew that I would have a best friend for life. Watching you navigate through life as you raise your family and pursue your dreams has given me a great sense of joy. You have grown into a strong, beautiful woman with a caring heart for serving others. I know that you will be a wonderful addition to your community. I believe in you, and I know that there is no obstacle that you cannot overcome. God bless you always, Mom.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker?
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. My name is Lydia Ochoa. Tonight, I'm speaking in my personal capacity. I am so honored to endorse Danielle Romero for the Montebello City Council District Four vacancy. My confidence in her leadership is unwavering, and I firmly believe she is the ideal candidate for this role. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Kathy Flores.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm speaking to you tonight. My name is Mrs. Flores. In my personal capacity, I am proud to endorse Danielle Romero. Woo-hoo! For Montebello City Council District Four vacancy. My confidence in her leadership is steady fast, and I firmly believe she is the perfect candidate for this role, and I've known her since she was a baby. And she's done nothing but just moved forward and supported our veterans. That's top there. And everybody she runs into adores her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Delia Delgado.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. I am here to talk about today's interviews for the appointment of the vacancy to District Four council member. Yes, there is a clear choice. It is obvious to me that there is one person I believe will be best, will best represent District Four, but the city as a whole as well. That is Danielle Romero. She is not only an upstanding resident, she served our country in the military and is actively helping veterans with their benefits, housing, and whatever is needed. She is currently serving as a Traffic and Safety Commissioner. She and her husband own a small business here in the city of Montebello and belongs to several community groups. Danielle Romero is not sitting on the sidelines. That shows me her community involvement and her commitment to seeing that our community does move forward. Yes, education degrees, that's great, but it doesn't make you a leader, and it's not a prerequisite either. I have lived in this community for forty-eight years, and I have seen council members come and council members go, but have known a handful that served with integrity. What are the characteristics of a good leader? Strong communication skills, integrity, empathy, self-awareness, a clear vision, the ability to inspire others, decisiveness, all while maintaining ethical behavior and adapting to changes. Danielle Romero possesses, possesses these qualities. Keep the main thing the main thing and make the right choice. My name is Delia Delgado, and I support Danielle Romero for District Four council member.
Thank you for your comments. If we can have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Monica Erwella.
Monica? She left. Okay, if we can have the next speaker?
I want these, these candidates to realize, this is just a dog and pony show. They're not going to take you into account. The last time, there were ten people sitting up there. The cheater at the end was texting, they were texting them the messages. They knew two weeks before--
If we can please address the council?
Okay, two weeks before, they had the interviews. Scarlett Peralta texts somebody. Never write something in text, idiot, because they can use it against you. We've already made our choice. We've already made our choice, two weeks before you opened it up for interviews. That's a Brown Act violation. Trust me, you're going to hear about it. And again, the excuse you used was because he came in second, right? Well, you can say the same thing about Joella. Stick to your, let's see what kind of word you have. We know you don't, but let's see if you can. Joella came in second, right? We all know who's going to get appointed, and it's not going to be the people, the ones that want the choice they have, okay? You know what's very sad? You see all these people who are veterans with their American flag? You know what you should do? You should have a special election. Let the people's voices be heard, because that's the America way to do things. Let people's voices be heard. This is United States of America, and I thank you all, you veterans, for your service. That's why they served, for our right to vote. And you're not going to appoint the ones that we want. Christina Cortez already told you who to vote, who to get up there. But don't worry, we're going to go to court. You're not going to be sitting up there very long, and neither are you.
Thank you for your comments. If we can get the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is David Ledesma.
So, good evening. I'm here to ask you to consider Danielle Romero for the city council. I've been blessed to know her since she's married her husband. I've experienced the things she does at the Veterans of American Legion. If you don't know, she's the captain of the Honor Guard. We had a family member who was part of the American Legion. He was a veteran, and so I didn't, never knew what she did. And so I was very-- And so I was very proud when the ceremony happened. Danielle explained to the audience what was going to happen. She, also, the flag at the American Legion was brought down. Danielle and another member of the guard folded the flag. I don't know if you've ever seen when they give a flag to a veteran. They folded the flag. It was very articulate what they did. They gave it to the family member. And Danielle explained what was happening. She told everybody that when we, part of the ceremony, if you're a veteran, use your right hand in salute. If you're not, place your hand over the heart. She is dedicated. She, we've already heard that she's an Army veteran. Who better to serve our community? She already knows what it is to be a veteran. She was already fighting for all of our freedom being a veteran in the Army. And you know, being a veteran, there's certain parameters that you need to be a soldier. You know, certain rules you have to abide by. You have to also, if you're wrong, maybe fix the problem. Always, when I've ever doubted with her with family things, she's always said, oh, we're going to do this. She'll call you back. She'll let you know. I just think that somebody who has given her time to the veterans, to our community, to our family, is a good choice for all of us. And so, thank you very much. And I hope you consider Danielle Romero for the next City Councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker. Again, please refrain from clapping.
The next speaker is James Santana.
Good evening, Mayor Melendez and Council. I'm standing here again as a concerned resident in regards to this appointment tonight that's taking place. I participated in the same show that played out for District Five. And I've actually done a little bit of research. Looking back at the history of these appointments, these last few years, we've talked about the continuity of business. It's concerning that we put a price on fair elections, but not a price on lawsuits. We don't talk about those. And that's surprising that some of you on this council would call yourself Democrats because we're doing undemocratic things. We're not pushing for fair elections. We should be pushing off all the lawsuits. Back in 2023, Mayor Melendez, Mayor Protemp Tamaio, and Councilwoman Peralta sat on the council. And that transitioned from five to seven. This then was insinuated by them that the runners-up at that time should be appointed. And then on the last hour, Councilman Torres, Mayor Protemp Tamaio, and Councilwoman Peralta blasted the other council for their actions and then reverted back from a seven to a five council. Now, just a month ago, a precedent was set that the runner-up for this race that happened two years ago prior, not associated with the recall, should be appointed. So following this precedent tonight, there should be, there are two candidates for appointment that ran both in 2024 and 2022. And I'm not up here to campaign for any of them. Instead, I'm trying to remind you, the council, the city, my neighbors, that we should do exactly what we've done this last time. You need to follow your own precedent. You need to choose the candidate that recently ran and got the most votes in this last election. Break away from the corruption. Break away from the idea that this council is compromised. If you don't, if you don't do what you've done before, then residents again need to question why. And in regards to the corruption that we saw today with DA Hawkman going into Huntington Park, there are connections on this dais with those incidents. He has stated in an article saying that when concerns arise about the use of public funds and the actions of those in office, it is our duty, it's his duty, to investigate thoroughly and protect the public trust. No one, regardless of their position or title, is above the law. You are not above the law. You are not above the law. And we need to be on the right side of history tonight. Appoint the people's choice, not another representative that's going to follow your status quo. Please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Oscar Guerrero. The next speaker is Lily Turan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm here tonight speaking in my personal capacity in support of Danielle Romero for the appointment to the vacancy on the Montebello Council District Four. I am confident in her leadership and know she is the best candidate to serve in that role. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Paulette Shubin.
Hello, everyone. I'm just going to test the mic. Don't know how close I should be. It is with great enthusiasm to greet you, City Council members and elected officials. It is with great appreciation that I stand before you all today. My name is Paulette Shubin, and I'm a resident of the city of Montebello. While my initial interest in joining tonight's meeting was to deliver my oral statement for City Councilmember vacancy, it was clarified to me that I should make a public comment instead since I misread the district map. I do reside in District Three and I work as a full-time employee in South Montebello. As a current AmeriCorps Fellow with the State of California's Climate Action Corps program, I'm on a team of five who are hosted by our city's local food bank, Heart of Compassion. Throughout the Golden State that we all call home, AmeriCorps Fellows get hosted by different community organizations that have been reputedly civically engaged. The three areas that we serve in are fire, resiliency, urban greening, and food waste and food rescue. Upon completion of my first AmeriCorps term in national service in South Florida with City Year Miami, I never imagined that a whole 10 years later, there would be another program that encouraged young people like myself to care and to know that they will be cared for in my own city of Montebello that I moved away from to accomplish goals and dreams for my community. This fellowship reflects the expansion that the city of Montebello has been able to cultivate with like-minded community participants. Recognize at the city and state level for their commitments in fighting hunger and feeding hope, Heart of Compassion's 20,000-square-foot warehouse serves as a site for interconnected resources. Operations on-site are made possible by volunteers who complete various tasks. Beyond the family and the individual level, you can also see national effects that are as a result of a ripple effect. From one person caring, to that reaching a family, to that reaching a community, then region, then state, then national. My interest in this role is being able to identify trends that have been identified in today's public comments. While I was initially excited about this vacancy, it quickly was revealed to me that there is distrust, discord, and a doubt in every single one of your positions. I thank you all behind me for just allowing me to be here.
If we can address the council.
And so, to wrap up, I just want to acknowledge that this is an opportunity to be able to identify these trends. Our city of Montebello, Monte Bejo, beautiful mountain in Spanish, is indeed beautiful. My mom knew this when she single-handedly moved our family from East L.A. to the Beverly Hospital area, which is now White Adventist. She has served there as a cashier and food service worker for 20-plus years. And so our ties are deep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Cory Chappell.
Hi, thank you. I want to start by saying that I have the utmost respect for veterans. So thank you for your service. My husband served in the United States Marine Corps. My father in the U.S. Navy. My grandfather in the Navy. My uncles, two of them in the Navy. My father-in-law in the Army and his brother in the United States Air Force shot down over Hamburger Hill, but lived to tell the tale. So utmost respect for veterans. That said, I feel that that doesn't necessarily make you the most qualified candidate for City Council. I also feel that there was an opportunity for anybody who wanted this chair to run, as there was just an election in November. And only one of the candidates tonight for the appointment actually ran in November. That said, I'm trying to give City Council members the benefit of the doubt in hopes that when you appointed Mr. Alonso, you were really trying to give the community a voice. Because in our last election, Mr. Alonso did come in second with 686 votes. Whether it was intended or not, I do feel like you did set a precedent. Mr. Alonso came in second. I feel that the only person who ran most recently in November also came in second, but not with 686 votes, rather 1,723 votes, or 47% of the voters in that district. Joella received over 1,000 more votes than Mr. Alonso. In addition, her election cycle was just a couple of months ago, not years ago like Mr. Alonso's. Her qualifications include 15 years of public service. I'm not hearing that on the end from anybody else. She served with the City of Los Angeles City Council, Department of Public Works, as well as the city of Montebello here, where she served as Planning Commissioner for District Five. She is a graduate from USC International Relations. She does speak Spanish, Ms. Peralta. I know that's important for the community. She is more than capable of stepping into this role to represent the community who supports her for this appointment. In fact, if anyone other than Joella is appointed to this vacancy, you will be sending the clear message to all of us that the voters who live in District Four do not matter. In addition, you are going to confirm there was zero regard for the voters in District Five when Mr. Alonso was appointed. Mr. Mayor, I know that you were not here the night that he was appointed. I'm going to speak directly to you for this. You were elected to serve on behalf of every single member of Montebello, not just the districts, all of us. Please don't choose to silence those of us who live on the south side of your city. All eyes are on you. As you decide if our voices matter and our votes count, please do the right thing and stand with the community who elected you. Joella for District Four.
If we can have the next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lauren Kinonis. We'll move on to the next speaker. The next speaker is Maria Knox.
Oof, what a night. Anyways, good evening or good night, Council members and mayor. Congratulations. I haven't had the opportunity to say congratulations to you. I'm here to express my support for Danielle Romero. I've had the opportunity to work alongside with her in the Traffic and Safety Committee. And I have, what I've noticed is that she is very committed to the community. That's basically more the reason so why I'm putting my support behind her. I applaud all the candidates that put their name in the hat because it's very brave of every one of you to serve the community, to run for an elected position. It's not easy to be there. I see it. I feel it. So kudos to you, all of them, the four of them, who want to be a council member. But again, my support goes behind Danielle Romero. I have seen how involved she's in the community. As scouts grow, I know that they learn values, ethic, leadership, decision-making. And that's very valuable to be sitting as a council member, not to be afraid to make decisions, not to be afraid of saying yes or no, to vote her conscience and do what's best for the community. And I know that she will do that. She doesn't have maybe 15 years of experience, but she is a good candidate because she is involved and devoted to her community. And I have seen it. I have experienced it myself. And that's all I can say. And good luck in making a decision because I don't think any decision you guys make tonight will please everyone. But I hope that you guys vote the one that is the best candidate for the position for District Four and for the city as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. If we can have the next speaker.
The last speaker is Darlene Alcala.
Good evening, Council members. I wanted to speak briefly on the current appointment efforts for D4 and share three key elements that traditionally are characteristics of an ethical and valued city elected official. Commitment, character, and consistency. Council has heard many citizens stand at this podium and express their deep frustrations and concerns about two council members' selections for the D5 seat. Many, I'm sorry, the perspective of many of the D5 citizens is that council does not care or find any value in the feedback and their priorities as a community. The former D5 council member fell short of accomplishing much-needed improvements and investments by Montebello government for D5. This being said, the looming appointment process for the D4 seat is of utmost concern. Will the priorities and voice of the D4 citizens be taken to heart? Will a fair process be possible? Or will the concerning acts that occurred weeks ago for the D5 seat be repeated? Council members, you are challenged with improving the perception that weighs on Montebello City Government. Improve transparency. Prove by your actions that your personal agendas are not the largest part of the decision equation. And publicly meet with your district citizens together to help eliminate any misperceptions. Once again, commitment, character, consistency. These are the attributes that make a trusted and valuable council member. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, we have concluded all comments. Do we have an additional card, Kimberly?
Sorry, what was the name?
What was the name?
Yes, the comment card came in after the statement was read by the city attorney. Would you like to accept the card?
We couldn't allow the speaker to come in.
We'll have Yola Robal.
Hello, my name is Yola Robato. I've lived in Montebello for over 25 years. I have a small speech pathology and audiology business here. And I have serviced students for Montebello Unified School District. I have three children, and they all went to schools here. David went to school with my daughter. And I know David well. In addition to that, my husband is 100% disabled Vietnam veteran who's here with me. I'm here to speak on behalf of Joella Valdez. Joella is a person who I have known forever. I am her auntie. I encourage her to move to Montebello. I love Montebello. I refuse to leave Montebello. But my problem is fairness. Fairness is what I want and I would like and expect for my place right here in Montebello. I'm not moving. My house is owned and we're not selling. So for that, I would like to see a fair election. I know she walked and knocked on doors because I did it with her, my children did it with her, my husband did it with her. She is well-known, well-respected, well-educated. And not only that, she might have the ability to speak three languages. Not only Spanish, but she speaks French and English, and she speaks Creole. If you guys know where that is, it's from Central America. So if you ask me, she is the top of your food chain or whatever chain you have, rather than... than taking someone who left and came back and you assign, and I think that that is wrong. For me, I endorse Joella. She would do a fantastic job. She's creative, she has decision-making skills. She is emotionally intelligent as well as academically intelligent. If anyone here meets her, speaks to her, and knows her, you will know that she not only have an education, but she has skills to help her with people who don't have an education. She does not look down on anyone, she does not demean anyone. She is all for Montebello. She loves Montebello just like her auntie does and her cousin does, and we all live in Montebello. And I don't see any of me up there. Like I said, diversity is very important. I don't see it. I would love to see it. This is a wonderful, wonderful city. Let's see some diversity, not just for diversity, but for skills that she can bring to this place, and not only that, for everyone in Montebello.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Okay, we have concluded all speakers. At this time, we'll begin the process, so we'll ask if the candidates can go, can be escorted to the room, and then we'll have a draw and start bringing folks in. As a courtesy—we cannot mandate, as a courtesy—if you can refrain from using your
I just wanted to say that Joella's not going to take an income. She doesn't want to get paid.
All right, so we're coming back. We're going to announce—we're going to announce the first speaker to come up here.
While we're going through that, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to remind the audience that as each speaker makes their presentation, there should be civility and decorum in the chambers, no commenting on what the speaker's statements are or their responses to the questions, and also that if anyone disrupts the meeting, those individuals could be removed.
Okay. Thank you for that. If we can call the first speaker.
The first candidate is Joella Valdez.
Richie's going to walk in.
Before you begin, good evening. Let me describe the process that we're going to follow. You will have an initial two minutes to make your presentation to whatever you would like to address to the city council. Once your two minutes have concluded, then it will come up to the council level to ask questions. Those will be rotated, and Mayor will determine that rotation. Once you are asked a question from the individual council member, you will then be given one minute to address that question and provide your response. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to proceed.
Okay, go ahead.
With over 15 years of public service, I have secured funding, expanded budgets, and implemented policies that have improved and enhanced city services. As a public works professional, I manage over $600 million in grant-funded infrastructure projects, and I've also led programs that clear an average of 100 tons every month of garbage from neighborhoods and business corridors. This is the experience that I bring to Montebello. And in Montebello, I have not made any promises, but I have done the work. I served on the Planning Commission where I advocated for the voices of District 5 and all residents to be heard. Together with my colleagues, we adopted ordinances and resolutions to address the blight and vandalism that we see every day. I have been active in multiple service clubs, including the Seroptimist and the Women's Club, where we champion women's empowerment through education. And as a proud cheer mom, I support my daughter and all my cheer nieces that you guys met tonight as a Montebello Indian. So my commitment to this city is far beyond policy. When I ran for this office just three months ago, I knocked on 3,000 doors three times. The people of District 4 walked with me, and together we identified opportunities for improvements, improvements that we all need in our neighborhood, and I'm happy to say that some of them are underway. Today, these same residents stand with me. Hundreds of emails have been sent, and I have 54 letters from residents supporting my appointment that I'd like the deputy clerk to enter into the record. I am the only applicant before you tonight that has earned 47% of the district votes. Tonight's decision, although, is in your hands, the council, not the people. But I ask you to take this opportunity to work with me in restoring public trust, upholding the precedent that this council has set a few weeks ago, and end the cycle of the disconnect between the council and the people. And this, tonight, we have the best opportunity to make this happen.
Thank you for your statement. So at this time, we'll commence with the question portion that each council member's can ask. We'll start off with Councilmember Peralta.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What programs or services that the city provides would you like to see more of, and how would you suggest improving them?
A part of my platform when I ran in November was addressing the abandoned storefronts and buildings in our district. Our district has the largest concentration of abandoned storefronts and buildings. As a commissioner, together with the council, we adopted ordinances and resolutions for a clean task crew. When I was an environmental equity deputy in the City of Los Angeles, we secured environmental equity funding, not general funds, to fund something called rapid response teams, very similar to what the clean task would be. I'd like to see a dedicated crew that can rapidly respond to illegal dumping, scattered trash, and graffiti removal. This is something that I can help bring to this city and secure funding through environmental equity funding. I've done it before. This is not a promise. This is the experience that I bring to this city.
Thank you for your answer. Councilmember Alonso.
How do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions?
Let's talk about a real-world example right here in Montebello. When I was a planning commissioner, we had a very difficult decision to make when it came to the Jack Mar development. Because as a resident on the south side, we want to see nice things, we want to see nice developments, and we also have a housing requirement that we have to fulfill as a city to stay compliant with our general plan and our housing element. However, the first thing I did was I listened to the residents. There was a point where they wanted to stop public comment, and as a commissioner, I made sure that the residents were able to comment because the applicant was able to comment. And it was a tough decision because, like I said, we want to see development, but we want to see it done responsibly, and we want to make sure that we honor the residents, the people that are going to be impacted most by these decisions, and also our environment.
Thank you for your answer. Mayor Protem, Tamayo.
Yes, my question is, how do you balance the needs of the community or organizations with your own values and priorities?
I'm a mother. I'm a business owner here in Montebello. I own a small trucking company right on Maple. And my values are very consistent with my neighbors, and I learned that when I knocked on those 3,000 doors this past year, and I knocked on some more doors this weekend. The idea to reinvest the council funds was my idea, and I applaud you for reinvesting some of that by offering your scholarships. Those are my values. The neighbors know my values, and some of you know my values that are standing up there. So the way you balance your values is to have good ones. That's how you balance them.
Thank you for your answer, and I'll be asking the last question. Can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how has that prepared you for this opportunity?
I want to start by saying community service is very important, and myself, like my other colleagues that are standing for appointment, we've all been active in the community. And I want to say, yes, education does matter because you standing here tonight, you're not just community service members, you're public servants, and you have an obligation to—and a fiduciary obligation to this city—to be educated in constitutional law and manage budgets. And that's what I do every day for a living. I'm a public works professional, and like I mentioned, I manage over $600 million in infrastructure projects, making the roads and streets in the City of Los Angeles safe for motorists and pedestrians. And I think that's why my expectation of the city services that we deserve as residents are high because I know that every day I work hard to make sure that that city has adequate services, and we deserve it too because our taxes that we pay right now are not on par with the level of services that we receive.
Thank you for your answers. This concludes this portion. If you can take a seat, and if we can call the next candidate, please.
Good evening. And before you begin, let me describe the process that's going to be followed in the next few minutes. As indicated, you will have two minutes in which to address the city council, to state whatever you'd like to do in terms of your qualifications and background. After the two-minute time period has elapsed, then it will come up to the council level. Each council member will ask you a question that they previously identified. You will have one minute in which to respond or address the question from each council member. At the conclusion of all four questions, we will say thank you, and you will be able to remain here in the council chambers for the balance of the interviews. So this is your time. You now have two minutes. Your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and residents of Montebello. It is my honor to submit my application for appointment to Montebello City Council as representative for District 4. My husband and I, along with our three boys, have called Montebello home for the past 16 years. My husband's husband goes back four generations. Together, we own a small business, and our children are a product of the Montebello Unified School District. Both my husband and my son have both worked for the beloved Burgers Dairy and my very own District 4. I'm a resident like so many others who come from humble beginnings and has worked extremely hard for what we have, and I am ready to fight for the community that I love. If I had to describe my life in one word, it would be service. I enlisted in the Army at the young age of 17. I currently work as a Veteran Service Officer, where I help veterans and their families with benefit claims, housing, and job placement resources. I volunteer as a third vice at the American Legion, and I sit on the Board of Directors. As the first female Honor Guard member and first elected captain of the Honor Guard, I hope to inspire other women to get involved as well. I serve as assistant vice adjutant for District 14, and I also community service chairman for the auxiliary. I'm a proud member of the Honor Society of Women Legionnaires. I currently serve on Montebello District 4 Traffic and Safety Commission. As a council member, I will be committed to enhancing the quality of life for the residents of District 4 and all of Montebello, and work with my colleagues to foster supportive business environment and attract more shopping options in our city. My goal is to stimulate economic development while ensuring our community remains vibrant and thriving. I envision a greater investment in our public parks.
Thank you for your statement.
I thank you for your time and consideration.
That concludes the statement portion. We'll move on to the questions, and we'll begin with Councilmember Alonso.
How do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions?
As we've seen here today, there obviously were some unpopular decisions, and one, you have to have extremely thick skin to be on city council, and I believe that I have this quality. There will always be unhappy people with any decision that is made. I plan to talk to the residents and get all perspective and all facts for any decision that I make, and gather as much possible, as much possible information as I can when I need to make the decision on what is best for the community as a whole. And as long as I can make the right decision with a good conscience, I believe that I can do that and sleep well at night.
Thank you for that answer. Mayor Protem, Tamayo.
My question is, how do you balance the needs of the community? how do you balance the needs of the community or organization with your own values and priorities?
Both as a leader and a representative, I'd have to take into account all facts, listen to the residents again. I need to put my personal views aside and be willing to compromise and acknowledge that maybe my ideas aren't the best. I need to be open to hearing all solutions for the betterment of our community.
Thank you for your answer. I'll go next. Can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how that has prepared you for this opportunity?
Working with the American Legion and veterans and just being involved in the community overall, different events, I believe it's really...
Please refrain, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe that it's valuable. And I've been able to attend all kinds of different events and speak to different residents. I too have walked and spoken with many residents throughout the city and listened to all of their complaints, their issues. And I believe that's when we're ready for this position.
Thank you for your answer. And we'll conclude with Councilmember Peralta.
What programs or services that the city provides would you like to see more of? And how would you suggest improving them?
I'd like to see the MCAP program expanded. Dillian firsthand was somebody who needed assistance. I was extremely impressed with the MCAP program. I saw there's a definite need for unhoused citizens and residents, unhoused residents in the city of Montebello. And I believe the MCAP program could definitely help with the housing of these individuals. And it would both keep safety for these individuals as well as the residents of Montebello. So MCAP is who I believe that I would invest in expanding that program.
Thank you for your answers. This concludes this portion. If you can, please take a seat. And we'll call on the next participant. Thank you.
The next candidate is Rafael Gutierrez.
Good evening, sir. And before you begin, let me describe the process that's going to be followed over the next few minutes. As indicated earlier, you will have an initial two minutes in which to present to the city council any statements you wish to make regarding your background qualifications. After your two-minute time period has expired, it will come up to the city council for questions. They will rotate the questions. And after the question, you will then have one minute in which to provide your response to the various questions. At the conclusion of the questioning, that will conclude the interview. You will be thanked. And then you'll be allowed to remain in the council chambers to hear the final candidate. With that, your two minutes will begin now.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to Montebello. Good evening to the mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city managers. And it's good to see all the directors here. My name is Rafael Gutierrez. I've been a resident of the city for 49 years. It's given me the opportunity to represent, if given the opportunity to represent the city, I would give back to the city that has provided so much for my family, my friends, my neighbors, my students, myself, since I was five years old. I have deep roots in the city of Montebello and care about moving the city forward for our next generation. I attended Montebello schools and graduated from Montebello High School. I was a local success when I was drafted out of East LA College by the Kansas City Royals and also played professionally for the Los Angeles Dodgers. I then came back to the community to inspire and mentor the youth by coaching and teaching at my alma mater. I will complete my 33rd year at Orloville, 12 as AD these past 12 years. I take pride that I'm the only candidate that residents voted to elect for the position of city treasurer in 2018. As a result, I have the understanding of the city budget, Mr. Solerza. Plus, during those four years, I was able to gain some insightful knowledge of all the different items and agendas for various departments. My involvement with various youth organizations and my experience as a teacher provide a unique perspective that will help me serve in this role. My many years as a Montebello resident, volunteer, educator, husband, and father have allowed me to gain multiple outlooks on the needs of our community. I want to be part of improving the safety of our residents, modernizing our parks, and repairing our streets. On the bigger scope, seeking funds to improve attractive, attract businesses and develop affordable housing are also of most importance. When making a decision, I will consider how it will affect the entire committee. It's within the city's financial goals and how it would impact the residents.
Thank you for your statement.
I respectfully ask for your consideration.
Thank you. This portion, we'll move on to the questions from my colleagues. And we'll start off with Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Hello. My question is, how do you balance the needs of the community or organization with your own values and priorities?
Well, I think, you know, as being the former city treasurer and I did run for an election in 2022, before you do all that and put in all the time and work and investment, you have your own personal goals that you might think are best for the city. But ultimately, you have to balance it with what your colleagues, what the residents, what your department thinks are in the best interest of the entire community. Even though I might have, I would say, you know, the tax base would be very important because obviously a tax base, bringing in business and getting more tax will ultimately benefit us because we can spend that money. And also, you know, I'm a big parks guy. I'm very involved with Montebello Baseball Association. And I think outdoor activity is good for the youth, good for everybody, even our seniors, our families. And it's a big part of the mental health that I think is very important in today's culture.
Thank you for your answer. I'll ask the next question. Can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how that has prepared you for this opportunity?
Okay, like I said, you know, I've been here for 49 years. So I've done a lot, okay? I'm 55 years old. I think I bring a different perspective of one of the older candidates here. And obviously, with kids in college, you know, involved with close to 800 athletes, 450 kids at the park. I'm still very involved there. I'm their city treasurer there as past commissioner. So I have a lot of involvement in the community. I also participate in the city investment committee. I was privileged enough to be invited by the council to go to a couple of conferences that were really opened my eye to what you guys have to take in perspective when making big decisions. Like I said, I've been the president at Montebello Baseball Association. I've coached at the YMCA. I've coached basketball there. I've coached baseball there. I've coached at Golden State. I coached the Montebello MVP. I was just there the other day with some students. And I'm also part of a service club. And I do, I am also the director of the Montebello High School Alumni Association and Athletic Hall of Fame Tournament. And we've raised about $250,000 in the last 22 years.
Thank you for your answer. Councilmember Peralta?
Thank you, mayor. What programs or services that the city provides would you like to see more of? And how would you suggest improving them?
Well, you know, I'll go back to the outdoors and just providing a variety of programs. I see what you guys do with the MVP program. I mean, it's a great program that you guys have where a lot of service groups from the high school come out and support. It gives a sense of pride, whether it could paint a bench. We're doing something this Saturday at Grant Ray. Your MCAP, your Explorers, those are thriving. Your ARR, the Adapted Inclusion Recreation is great. Your senior programs with your social dance, the walking club, all those outdoor activities, I think, that help everybody here in our city. And then the big events, the extravaganza, the fireworks, the street, the night market. I'd like to see more events at the park. I'm a big park guy. I think the band shelf needs to be used a little more. But a big fan of any outdoor activities that really brings the families out and sort of just keeps them away from their cell phones a little bit, I think will benefit everybody in our community.
Thank you for your answer. And we'll conclude with Councilmember Alonso.
How do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions?
Well, I mean, being on the council, you're not going to make everybody happy. I just hope that when you make a decision, you're taking in data, input from your colleagues. And I think, more importantly, input from the directors and the staff who are your full-time workers here, that that's what they're paid for and make sure that they give you the best data, advice. And, you know, that you explain to the residents that you're doing what's best for the entire community, although somebody will be very adamant about a certain area that they are very fond of or very passionate about. But ultimately, you're going to make some popular decisions and probably most of the time, some more unpopular decisions with some residents based on what their needs are. But together, I think you guys can make what's best in the interest of the entire city.
Thank you for that answer. That concludes this portion. You could please take a seat. And we'll call on the final candidate.
Thanks for your time.
The final candidate is Joshua Uloa.
Good evening, sir. And as you get settled in, and before you begin, let me describe the process that will take place over the next few minutes. Initially, you will have two minutes in which to provide a statement to the city council regarding your background, experience, and qualifications. After that, you will be asked a question from each of the four council members. After being asked that question, you will have one minute in which to respond to that question. And then after each of the council members asks you a question, that will conclude the interview process. Thank you very much for participating.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, clerk, staff, and the rest of the city council. My name is Joshua Uloa, and I'm running for your city council in District Four. I have been a resident of the Montebello community since 2017. In that time, I have witnessed this community grow and flourish. And I want to contribute to that city's growing excellence. That is why I feel the calling for my community. I have my bachelor's and master's degree in political science with a minor in public administration from California State University Fullerton. In my studies and personal experience, I have learned the importance of public service and the importance of local government and how it impacts every day in our day-to-day lives. As a potential member of this city council, service means putting your community first, listening to the needs of your constituents, and upholding yourself to the highest ethics and transparency. One of the pressing local policy issues that I will be focused on that would affect the District Four community are as follows. Solving the inconveniences of the Union Pacific Railroad Service. A particular issue I'm also very passionate about and eager to collaborate on is the lack of low-income housing for all Montebello residents. Our neighbors are being priced out and are unable to afford and to continue to live in our community when we should be, in fact, be fostering a city that is growing and maintaining our fellow neighbors that have lived here in Montebello. Although these issues affect District Four, these are issues that affect Montebello citywide. The solution to this goes back to public service. Service is about being a leader. And in these uncertain times, I believe in serving Montebello as a leader to unify and collaborate and putting Montebello first. Since living in Montebello, the city council has established a positive legacy in our community. And I hope to foster a tradition of service for all. I'm proud to live in this city and I'm lucky to represent District Four and to serve on the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. We'll begin the question portion. I'll begin. Can you describe your overall experience to include work, volunteer, and/or community involvement, and how that has prepared you for this opportunity?
Yes, thank you for the question. Ever since I lived in Montebello since 2017, I've been involved in the city council meetings. I've attended a lot of them. And what I've noticed from then, from 2017 and now, is that we have the same constituents that have similar concerns and the lack of rapport between community members and the constituents. And I feel like that has to change. I feel like, given the opportunity to serve here, I can help facilitate better rapport between the constituents and the city council. I haven't done much to volunteer, but I'm involved in this community. And I want to represent everybody all.
Thank you for your answer. We'll move on to Councilmember Peralta.
Thank you, mayor. What programs or services that the city provides would you like to see more of? And how would you suggest improving them?
Yeah, so a good program that I like to see is more community events for everybody in Montebello. I feel like we have to establish better rapport between the council and the constituents. And the best way to do that is to hold more frequent community events, right? Also, more events for seniors that we hold in our park down the street. Let's see. I would suggest holding them more frequently. That way, we can establish that rapport and listen to the concerns that they have and feel that they don't go unnoticed between you guys and them. So to me, rapport between each other is one of the most important things we have and one of the most important things we can do to better ourselves and this community.
Thank you for your answer. We'll move on to Councilmember Alonso.
How do you approach making difficult or unpopular decisions?
You have to talk to the people. So whether it's difficult or not, you have to get everybody's opinion. It helps that we're now no longer an at-large community, but rather district. That gives us better opportunities to get to know our constituents better, to have those conversations and to bounce ideas back forth between what we might want to implement and what the ideas that our constituents might have. And so once we establish those connections and that rapport, we can create the best ideas for Montebello and foster a better environment for everybody.
Thank you for that answer. And we'll conclude with Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Yes, my question is, how do you balance the needs of the community or organization with your own values and priorities?
Right, so as I stated in my candidate's statement, I believe these issues affect everybody. You know, whether you live in District 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, they affect everybody in Montebello. And what I can bring to the table is that I'll bring, I'll hold myself to the utmost standard of transparency. I understand I have a lot to prove to the council and to the constituents that are here. If I have, if I'm lucky to serve on this council, I intend to hold bi-weekly town halls. That's something we have to do. And that's how we better balance community between our values, their values, and the values of the city council.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you.
At this point, it concludes all the questions. If you would like to take a seat.
Thank you.
And this comes up to council-level discussion. So for my colleagues, I'll go around. I would just ask my colleagues to hold off on any nominations. Just provide comments at this time. Once we conclude the comments, then we'll entertain nominations. And if we get a second on any of those nominations, then we'll take a vote. So... get a second on any of those nominations, then we'll take a vote. So I'll begin with Councilmember Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank all the candidates here this evening for coming forward and just sharing your vision specifically for your district. I think we had a variety of candidates with just varying degrees of experience with Ms. Valdez and her experience within city departments, as well as her work previously in the Planning Commission. Mrs. Romero's extensive military experience, her work through the American Legion, as well as representing District Four through the Traffic and Safety Commission. We also had Mr. Gutierrez and his knowledge of our local government through his experience as our previously elected city treasurer, as well as his work through youth sports, as well as Mr. Uloa. I apologize if I mispronounced that. His courage as a younger resident seeking to step up for his district and create impact through building positive repertoire between Council as well as residents. And so, again, as we see here today, we have candidates with just a variety of values, experience, and various visions for the district. So just want to thank you all for participating.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralta. Councilmember Alonso?
First and foremost, let me thank everybody for being here and actually coming up here and giving statements and being interested in serving in the Council. I appreciate the professionalism that every single one of you exhibited tonight. I say that as somebody who clearly just went to the exact same thing that all of you are going tonight. So thank you for your interest in serving, and thank you for the professionalism that every single one of you exhibited tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Alonso. Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Yes, and again, you know, thank you to everybody. I think it's, it takes courage to come up here and put yourself in front of the community and answer these questions. I know they're sometimes very brief, but I did read your statements and listened to what you had to share with us. And I thank you for coming forward. I know we have experience with previous electeds and others that sit on commissions, so you're aware of, you know, the being up on the dais and what that means. I listened to your priorities for the district of improving streets and parks and being in more communication with the community and the veterans, serving veterans and your other priorities. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tamayo. And just my thoughts, thanks to everybody who applied for this position. It's not easy to come up here, like I said before, and face us, face the public, and answer these questions. You might not have enough time to answer these questions, but it's, you know, it's a process we have here. And we received throughout this whole process, we received emails, calls, messages, a lot of packed chamber. So just want to applaud everybody for their participation and for really coming out here and providing this civic engagement and allowing us to hear, breathe, and take in what the community is seeking and asking for. So again, just want to thank everybody. So what we'll do now is I'll entertain any nominations. Don't second it yet, please. Just if you have a nomination, and then we'll go down the list and provide a second. And if we provide a second, then we'll go on to a vote. So I'll look around to see if anybody has any nomination for any particular candidate. I can make the first nomination, and I'll nominate Joel Valdez. Is there a second? Is there another nomination?
I will nominate Danielle Romero.
All right. Is there another nomination?
I also nominate Danielle Romero.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll have, so we'll under new nominations, under new candidates. Okay, so we'll close the nominations, which was Joel Valdez. Is there a second for this nomination?
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest then is you have two nominations, and then you can poll the City Council of which of those two individuals that have been nominated would be the one individual that the council member would vote for. Is that okay?
So we would go, do we do like a roll call?
You do the rotation, and then it's either a trace between Ms. Romero or Ms. Valdez.
Okay. All right. We'll start off with Councilmember Peralta, and it's between Joel Valdez and Danielle Romero.
My preference would be for Ms. Romero.
Okay, we'll go on with Councilmember Alonso.
My preference is for Ms. Danielle Romero.
Okay, and we'll go on with Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Danielle Romero.
Okay, and I'll go with Joel Valdez. So at this time, do we have, do we have to take a roll call?
No, you have three votes in favor of Ms. Romero. You have one vote in favor of Ms. Valdez.
If we can please refrain.
And with that, the Council has selected Ms. Romero.
Okay, congratulations, District Four. Ms. Romero, we'll do the...
Mayor, because she's been newly appointed to this position, we do have current city business that she has not been privy to. Maybe we conclude this meeting and have her do the swearing-in at the end?
So at the end of the conclusion of the meeting, we'll bring you back over here, and we'll do the swearing-in too, so you can officially take the seat over here. All right, we'll move on to item number six. Do we have a staff presentation?
Thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Tonight, this is the second quarter...
Hello, everyone. We're still conducting a meeting. If we can please... If we, yes. If we can please...
We need to run a meeting. Excuse me.
Again, if we can please... Yes, if we can please continue to conduct meeting. Can we have, all right, if we can please...
The police department and escort.
Please ask her.
Okay, if we can please, we need to continue with the meeting. Mr. Peralta, if you can please begin the presentation.
Appreciate it. So we have our second quarter budget report and City Council Budget Priorities Setting Session. So for tonight, it'll be a review of mid-year expenditures and revenues, and then an overview of our budget process for '25-'26. So just to recap, again, continuing the transparency and outreach we started last year, we had a community budget forum last Thursday at Senior Center. We're doing the budget presentation tonight, and as the City Manager mentioned, we'll be setting two more dates in March out in the community. And then we have a survey out right now, going live, went live last week, and this budget survey will be going through the end of March. So again, here's the dates that are confirmed. We have one more date confirmed tomorrow for Reggio Rodriguez Park, and then look for announcement for dates in March. And just as an aside, last week's budget meeting at the Senior Center was recorded, and tomorrow will actually be available on our social media. So for those who can't make it actually in person, you can actually see the presentation from last week. And here's the QR code for the budget survey. I'll leave that up again at the end of the presentation, but the survey is available on all of our social media. So our mid-year, our second quarter, we have seven months of actuals that we use to kind of reorient where we started and where we're planning to end the fiscal year. And this traditionally marks the start of our budget season. So what guides our budget discussion is a five-year strategic process. We're in, we're currently in the fifth year of it, and this is, again, just a process that guides budget development, make sure that we're actually analyzing and looking at our expenditures and our revenues more closely. And we're putting together a budget that not only meets Council priorities, but makes sense and is balanced. And for those council members who've been around for more than a couple of years, you've seen the slide before. It's the buckets. Again, as you build a public sector budget, that's what we're looking at, is using the restricted revenue from the different buckets of revenue we get, whether it's general fund, or metro revenue, or transit revenue, and setting priorities that way. So the updated forecast, we started the year with $562,000 surplus. Right now, it's projecting still to be a surplus of about $346,000. We've had some increases to revenue, increases in expenditures, but still at this point, projecting a modest surplus to end the year. I'm just going to pretend they're clapping for me. So where we get our revenue from? For the general fund, our two largest sources of revenue are sales and property tax. Again, it's very important, a very broad retail base. Our property tax keeps doing very well. But we also get permit revenue, charges for services. So for our revenue projections, our forecasts actually were almost $7 million more than what our adopted budget was. So to put it in perspective, we build this budget in April and May. So since then, we've had, you know, seven or eight months of actual data, not to mention some unaudited results from last year. Our sales tax, our Measure H, and the sales tax we get from Monterey Park Marketplace sharing is up, total of $250,000. Our property tax still is very strong, $672,000 more. Our license and permit revenue is up by $1.37 million. Development projects are going strong. There's definitely, definitely some activity out there, not just Metro Heights. I mean, there's all kinds of activity citywide. And I know Joe and his team can attest to that. And the recently approved Plan Check Agreement from November has a much more favorable sharing ratio for the city, so we actually are garnering more revenue off of that. So there's some contributing factors here that are actually helping drive that revenue. We're going to recognize $2 million in revenue from our hotel operations, as allowed by the indentures. And then our parking revenue is actually up, and that's just from basically making it easier for people to pay their tickets. So believe it or not, people actually want to pay. We've made it easier for them to pay. They're paying, so yay. Property tax, again, Metro Heights is contributing quite a bit. Our single-family residential median home price is at $850,000, up almost 16% year over year, so doing very well. So obviously, we know Topgolf still waiting on their first sales tax submission. I'm hoping to have something in April. So once those numbers are available, I'll present those to Council. And then with Tesla, with their soft open in November, we don't expect to get any results from Tesla until May or June. So not sure if that will necessarily inform '25-'26, but we'll keep working with our consultants and to get those sales tax numbers. So again, our sales tax, Monterey Park Marketplace is up, and so is Measure H. We're very fortunate that we have a very diverse sales tax base here. We're not heavily dependent on one retail sector, and that helps when it comes to ups and downs in the economy. So on the flip side, expenditures, public safety is the name of the game here in Montebello. We have our own police and fire departments. They take up more than 50% of our budget. That's typical for a full-service city. And again, placing a large priority, large emphasis on public safety. Public Works has non-CIP, so park maintenance, street maintenance, facilities, those kinds of things. And then, so the amended budget, amended budget, adopted budget is about $76 million. Amended budget is up to $79 million. Again, we've had about, of the $3.1 million in budget amendments, we've had some rollover of projects from the prior year, which is typical. We've been doing that every single fiscal year. And then since July, obviously, City Council has approved budget amendments since July adoption. So department expenditures, we are trending a little higher in salary benefits and overtime and public safety. No surprise, the City Council has approved a side letter with all of our associations to increase the city's contribution towards health benefits. Those became effective in January, so we're now starting to see where those additional expenses are going to land by June. So some of these increases are from increased health benefit contributions for employees, which, again, was much needed. Last time we'd done that was 2008. So that's a very positive thing for our employees. We also had a new MOU with the POA approved last spring. Now we're starting to see those impacts on the budget in terms of increased base wages and special pays. So again, these increases are not a surprise. We've had a lot of overtime and fire, but again, we were fortunate enough to be able to send strike teams to help the communities of Palisades and Altadena. We'll eventually get reimbursement back, but that usually runs about one or two years behind schedule, so. Also, a part of the action is there's some budget amendments that need to be approved. Again, recognizing $2 million revenue from the Home2 Suites Hotel, our city-bought software, additional overtime. There's some scuba tank purchase and equipment for fire that, we've been doing those for a couple of years now. And then there's some grant funding that we need to appropriate for both police, excuse me, fire and public works. The hotel operations, for Hilton Garden Inn, occupancy continues to recover post-pandemic. Their occupancy, the latest report was that they're at 94%, which compares to 74% same period last year. So once occupancy goes up, revenue goes up, operations are very strong. And the same can be said for Home2 Suites. Average daily rate continues to improve. Their occupancy is up at 95%. It was 80% same time last year. Their room revenue is up over, up by $100,000 versus same period last year. So our hotels are operating very well, very, very strong operations. They cover all of their operating costs with no problems. So for budget development, again, February, it's about reaching out to the community, the budget survey. March and April, we work with the fellow departments to put the budget together. Early May, City Council will get their first draft budget, and then first meeting in June, the budget will be presented for review and adoption. And then some budget priorities that are kind of have guided the current budget or looking to guide the next budget. Again, these are some talking points that we've used to get community feedback at the budget community forums. So we'll have an opportunity tomorrow for residents to give their feedback, similar to what we've done in prior budget forums. So here's the budget survey code for anybody watching, anybody who wants to get the, do the survey. Again, we encourage residents to complete the survey. Any feedback is put together with what we get from the budget forums. So again, thank you for your attention. If you have questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralta, for the presentation. I'll see if my colleagues have any questions, comments. Councilmember Peralta?
I'll keep it brief, because I know we're running pretty late here, and I know we all kind of worked a full day here. So just first off, thank you to city staff for continuing on with the online budget survey, and then also just expanding this year's opportunities to do in-person community outreach. I believe we're probably going to end up having one in every district, so I recognize that effort. I would say it just doesn't have to be answered tonight, but two questions, maybe as we work through the budget process. The first one is understanding, as I know we are kind of in the process of receiving projections for Topgolf, as well as the new Homes on the Hill, as well as Tesla, which just recently opened, just understand... which just recently opened, just understanding where we're at in terms of the revenue that we are receiving for, for that. And then secondly is, we do have multiple, I believe nine or so MOUs that will be expiring this year, and we will be entering the negotiation process with our, our unions and associations. Just trying to understand if, if the budget development for 2025, 2026, how will we kind of take that into consideration as we build out that budget? If it's okay, we can go ahead and just have those answers to those questions, maybe at the next check-in that we do with the process, because I know, I know it's late, so just empathize on that part. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your questions. Do any of my other colleagues have, Councilmember Alonso?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for extending this meeting longer than it needs to be, but I just want to take a quick moment here to talk about item six, not just necessarily the budget discussion, but I think it's a matter of priorities, fairness, and the future of our city. As you all know, obviously, I represent the South, and South Montevideo has been waiting. We've been waiting for resources, we've been waiting for investments, we've been waiting to be recognized as the vital, thriving community that we are. But people in District Five aren't just waiting around. They're working hard, they're raising families, they're building their neighborhoods, and now they're asking for us to do the same. So when we talk about public safety, we can't afford to be passive. Crime is happening now, and it's affecting people in various ways. A police substation in South Montevideo is not a luxury to necessity. Families shouldn't have to wonder whether help will arrive on time. They shouldn't feel forgotten because their side of the city doesn't have the same immediate access lines towards them. We need to make this commitment, put it in the budget, and get it done. But safety is just one part of the equation. Our streets covered in graffiti, full of potholes, and desperate need of attention. The riverbed, a dumping ground for West, really has turned into a magnet for crime, unfortunately. These aren't inconveniences. You know, they send a message, they send a message to the community that this part of the city isn't a priority, and this needs to change. And beyond infrastructure, let's talk about community. Look at our silly calendar. Look at the list of public events. Now, tell me, where are the events for South Montevideo? Few and far between, right? Where are the programs, the family gatherings, the youth initiatives that bring people together? I think the budget needs to reflect our commitment. A police substation, as I just mentioned, infrastructure funding to fix our streets, clean up graffiti, and restore the riverbed, and community investments, so that South Montevideo is more than just a district, right? But it's a thriving, connected part of our city. I don't want to hear, I don't, we're gonna look into it, I don't want to hear, maybe next year. When this council passes a budget for 2025, 2026, I want to see South Montevideo in it. Not as an afterthought, but as a priority, because the strength of Montevideo isn't just in one part of the city, it's in all of us as a whole. And if we truly believe that, let's prove it. Let's do the work, let's make the investment, let's, let's get this done, and let's get it done right.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Yes, so thank you. I did read the detailed report that's attached, so that has a lot of information, but I just would like to encourage the community to continue coming out to these meetings, these budget meetings, because again, we do want to see what your priorities are and what, what you want to see, not only in your districts, but in the city overall. So I encourage you to, to, you know, put down your ideas. We have the easels that are available, so please participate, because we do take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the comments. Again, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the whole budget process, and even in the budget sessions that we're having with the community, the way you're breaking it down, explaining it, and providing, receiving the input from the community is, it's something that has been great to see, so thank you again. We'll move on to, well, actually, no, we need a, we need a motion for this item.
I have a speaker.
Oh, we do have a speaker. Okay, if, we can please call the speaker?
You have James Santana?
Mayor and council, I know it's getting late, so I'm gonna try to be quick. I would like to address the city budget and first off say, great job, thank you. This is the information that we need, and we need to continue to present. You guys have, you guys have done multiple presentations and are going to, so wonderful job. This is what democracy looks like, thank you. Where I have an area of concern or a little bit of feedback is that there's really no line item or explanation about the city lawsuits and expenditures. I'm not wanting to like probe on the specifics or bring them up, but we really need to understand, and residents need to ask, where this money is going to come from specifically, and really in that pie chart also kind of where it's going out to. I'd really like to see dollar amounts, especially as we need and we talk about, thank you, Rick Alonso, for talking about the improvements in it in five. People ask about streets, improvements, businesses, public works, and park improvements, and I really find that the lawsuits that are happening and are going to happen are really gonna be at the detriment to our residents. Other cities are thriving, like Pico Rivera and Commerce, Monterey Park, and we're kind of stuck in the stone ages, especially along that, that Washington corridor. It really forces us right now, after the train tracks, to go to these other cities and spend our tax dollars there. Commerce is also making a new renovation in their corner where there's a Costco. So I'm glad the new councilwoman's in the back with her supporters, because these are really the questions that I hope that they also ask. This is the corruption that I keep talking about happening here, and it really needs to stop. Stop these illegal activities, and we need to stop getting sued. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, it's, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll motion to approve the item.
We have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
Second.
We have a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
Okay, that item carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At this time, the council will be addressing the consent calendar, which are items considered to be routine. Any member, any item a member of the city council wishes to address will be designated shortly, or anybody, if we have any speaker cards on any consent agenda items. Tonight, we'll be on the consent agenda addressing items numbers seven through 13. And with that, I will poll the council. The first, I think, is Councilmember Peralta. Any consent agenda items?
None, thank you.
Next is Councilmember Alonso.
I do, I'd like to poll on 10, please.
10?
10, yes.
Okay, and then...
Just a brief comment.
And then Councilmember Tam, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Tamayo?
No items.
Thank you. And Mayor Melendez?
No items.
So then it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items seven through 13, with the exception of item 10.
I motion to approve the items as related to the record.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
Second.
We have a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
All right, we'll move on to item number 10, that was polled by Councilmember Alonso.
I appreciate it, thank you so much. So, you know, I think it's no surprise that parks are the heart of a community, among many things, right? They're where families come together, kids play, neighbors connect. That's why I fully support submitting an application for the Outdoor Recreation Partnership Grant Program, because Reggie Rodriguez Park is more than just a park, it's a cornerstone of District Number Five. This is an incredible opportunity, and I want to thank staff for identifying this grant and taking the initiative to pursue it. You know, a multi-purpose baseball and soccer field, newly renovated basketball courts, upgraded lighting, irrigation and landscaping, these are more than just upgrades, right? They create new opportunities for our youth, for community gatherings, and for bringing new life to South Montevideo's, or rather, one of South Montevideo's most important public spaces. At the same time, we also need to ensure that Reggie Rodriguez Park remains a safe and welcome space for all. Many residents have raised concerns about transient individuals in the park. This is a challenge we need to address with both compassion and action. Simply increasing enforcement isn't a long-term solution. We need to work alongside outreach programs and social services to provide resources to those we need, while ensuring that the park remains vibrant, family-friendly space. Again, I want to commend staff for their dedication to ensuring funding opportunities like this. This project isn't just about renovations, it's about investment, about community pride, and about ensuring that South Montevideo receives the same care and attention as every other part of the city. So I look forward to seeing this vision take shape, because when we invest in our parks, we invest in the people who use them as well.
Thank you for your comments. If there's no other questions, comments on this item, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll motion to approve the item, and thank you Director Sisnawski for your work on this application.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
I second.
We have a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
All right, we'll move on to AB 1234 travel reports. I'll start off with Councilmember Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. This past weekend, I had the privilege to attend Independent Cities Association Conference. It was a great opportunity to connect with our local neighboring cities. We talked about homelessness, looked at Redondo, City of Redondo's model in terms of how they've decreased homelessness through a similar program that, that reflects the one that we have, such as MCAP. We talked about increasing public safety, the different technological tools that are available to our local police departments. And my favorite one was about LA 28, and talking about how cities need to be prepared in terms of how we can benefit from the Olympics coming into LA County. That concludes my trial report.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to report? Mayor Protem?
I as well had the opportunity to attend the ICA, which is the Independent Cities Association Conference, this weekend. And of the many workshops that I attended, I wanted to highlight one of them. It was the Fire and Emergency Prevention and Response and How to Prepare. Specifically, there was a neighboring police department that has a drone system, it's called Drone S First Responders, which is the DFR program. And actually, Montebello was instrumental in creating that program for our neighboring city. The DFR program aims to provide aerial support to emergency personnel by delivering real-time information before their arrival, a while on-site for radio calls. The initiative seeks to improve incident response time, to de-escalate situations, and increase the safety of emergency personnel. The Montebello Police Department has not fully implemented this DFR program, but it would be great to work with the department to make this happen. So we continue to invest in our police department, and we continue to make public safety a top priority here in this city.
Okay, right before we go into the council orals, I would like to have Danielle come up here and take her oath.
Go ahead and say aye and state your name.
I, Danielle Romero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
And without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, councilmember.
Congratulations, councilmember. We'll have you up here on the next, on the next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I do have a AB 1234 report as well. I also attended the ICA conference with my colleagues. Everything that my colleagues stated, the sessions were great, specifically the LA 28. I did chase down the speaker and didn't get a card, so hopefully we can get, hopefully we can somehow participate. I know there's 88 other cities that are also trying to participate, but I feel like we have a little bit more to offer, but. All right, we'll move on to council orals, and I see here, Councilmember Alonso, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to formally recognize the recipients of the South Montevideo Scholarship Future Leaders Award. As part of my commitment to investing in our community, I have pledged my monthly stipend towards scholarships for South Montevideo. Each month, I will highlight a different theme, and for February, I'm celebrating future leaders, where we are recognizing and uplifting hardworking youth in Montevideo and making a difference. This month's application period has closed, and I'm excited to award four $200 scholarships to the following outstanding individuals. Jair Gonzalez Jr., Vincent Casey, Danielle Tuga, and Heather Delvillar Solis. Looking ahead to March, I will be awarding a $200 scholarship to an aspiring local artist, musician, or writer, to support them in their creative work. Applications will open at the beginning of March, and you can apply at tinyurl.com/southmtv. Congratulations to this month's recipients, and I look forward to continuing to support and celebrate the talent and dedication of South Montevideo. I also would like to make a statement in regards to exploring the city's role in preserving the Historic DePaul Center. May I respectfully request a presentation on the city's role in preserving the Historic DePaul Center? To marry in our community, the DePaul Center is more than just a building, it is a landmark that embodies our rich cultural heritage and historical legacy. It is essential to understand its current status, the city's role in preserving strategies, preservation strategies, and how this translates in terms of budget allocations and potential upkeep. Additionally, I would like to explore opportunities for collaboration with the DePaul Center regarding shared community spaces and the use of its amenities. The spaces include conference rooms, outdoor facilities, and sports amenities, which could serve a valuable, or which could serve as a valuable resource to our residents. I would appreciate insight into whether an MOU or partnership agreement could be used to maximize community benefit. Understanding both the challenges and the opportunities associated with the DePaul Center's preservation is crucial. Can I get a roll call on this request to ensure we receive a comprehensive and detailed update on this matter on an upcoming meeting?
Do we have any comments from staff, or?
Yeah, unless you don't want to take the consensus, we're happy to report back. This is something that's really important for our city, especially in the south side, so it is definitely prudent for us to come back and, and give you a rundown.
Okay, we can have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
All right, we have consensus. Before we adjourn the meeting, I do want to adjourn this meeting for two members that we lost here that were, that had such a huge impact here in the city of Montebello. And first, Councilmember Romero, thank you for sharing a little bit of the bio for Lonnie Ostroff that passed away. He was a longtime resident for the city of Montebello. He had just turned 85 on February 17th. He and his wife ran a small tax business, and Lonnie was also a sign painter for many years. He was a Navy veteran and was a 30-year member of the Montebello American Legion Post 272. In there, he wore many hats. He was a building chairman, chaplain, flag officer, and service officer. He was also a beloved member of the honor guard, serving as chaplain and the bugler. He was extremely talented and loved to create with his hands. He was a jokester and was a friend to all who met him. He was a true definition of selfless service. Two weeks before he passed, his last wish was to participate in one last funeral. He mustered up all the energy he had left and blew both the bowson, I'm quoting, and be able to honor a fellow Navy man who had passed away. He is an inspiration to us all, and he will be missed by all that knew him. He is now at peace with his wife, Carol Ostroff.
Carol Ostroff. Our community has also true patriot and an example of a dedicated resident and man of honor. If we can please have a moment of silence for Alani Ostroff? We also, I'd like to also close in memory of Coach Jay Navarro, closing in memory of a lifelong mentor, leader, and Montebello treasure. Coach Jay Navarro dedicated over 30 years to the Montebello Indians Football Program, shaping the lives of countless youth through his mentorship, leadership, and passion for the game. A lifelong Montebello resident, Coach Navarro's unwavering commitment to the community left a lasting impact, instilling values of teamwork, discipline, and perseverance in generations of athletes. Beyond the field, Coach Navarro's influence extended to the families he worked with, fostering a strong sense of unity and support within Montebello. His legacy is one of dedication, service, and love for his community. In his final days, Coach Navarro's wish was for his funeral procession to pass by Grant Ray Park, a place that held deep meaning for him and the many young athletes he mentored. His request for a balloon release calling it his final ruckus is a testament to his vibrant spirit and the joy he brought to those around him. Tonight, we close this meeting in honor of Coach Jay Navarro, recognizing his invaluable contributions to Montebello and the countless lives he touched. Our deepest condolences go out to his wife Denise and the entire Navarro family. May his legacy continue to inspire and uplift the community he loved so dearly. If we can also have a moment of silence for... Okay. Again, thank you all who are here after a long meeting that we had. We appreciate everybody's participation. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.